Passed.
Welcome, everyone. We're returning from closed session.
There'd be nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. It is Thursday, March twenty first, two thousand twenty four. We will kick off the regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council. Madam Clerk, can you connect the roll call?
Councilmember Slaton.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pardog.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kramer.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Here.
And Mayor Claffey.
Yep.
Okay, Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the pledge?
Hi. And to their public, we wish you stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing. If we could just have a brief moment of silence for loved ones in your life that may have passed or hoping can recover from illness. Thank you. All right, moving on to item E, adoption of the agenda. Mr. Flor, are there any changes?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Any, accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, or Pardog, a second from Councilmember Kramer. All those in favor, please vote in the portal.
Aye.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. Moving on to presentations, presentation of March's adoptable dogs, North Bay.
Hi, meet Henry. He's about two years old. Henry's as sweet as pie. He loves to give big hugs and he's great on a leash, enjoys long walks and playing with other dogs. Henry's been at the shelter for four hundred and three days. This boy is ready to find his forever family. Henry's neutered, microchipped, and up to date on vaccines. Come down to our shelter to meet your best friend.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So our intake since January one, twenty twenty four, has been a hundred and forty five dogs have come into the shelter, hundred and sixteen have left the shelter, four sent to rescue, hundred and four returned to owners, seven adopted, one was euthanized with a ninety eight point six five percent release rate. Currently, our shelter population is fifty nine dogs. That includes seven puppies. It's with one of the mothers. And then to let you know, like they were saying about the microchipping, so far this year, they've microchipped sixty dogs and they've done forty seven free vaccinations and they're continuing with their vaccination and microchipping process.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to presentation from the Lake County Public Education and Government Channel's annual report. Do we have Supervisor Sabatier? Madam Clerk, is anyone raising their hand online?
Supervisor Sabatier is on the Zoom.
Says he's not quite ready. We might need to give him a minute.
Okay.
You could take public comment, I guess.
All right, we will move forward to public comment. This is a time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter that is not on the agenda and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow for the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under the public comment. When you come to the dais, please give your name and city of residence. If you're on Zoom, there's an option for you to enter comments in the app. Is there anyone here in the chamber that would like to make comment? Please come forward. You could say your name and city of residence.
Hi, I'm a resident of Clear Lake for thirty three years and my doctors tell me that I need to walk, but I can't walk, not in these streets. I have a problem with the potholes and the stray dogs. They have attacked me and a friend and my walking partner is an eighty year old woman who the dog jumped on her and she twirled and twirled until she got him off her back. And I live on Ladel and Austin is paved, Fortieth is paved, but I cannot walk past my block. I cannot walk in my block to get to some of the smoother roads in order to walk. And it's a problem and on Austin and Ladel, sometimes there are four dogs that are chasing cars. They're loose and and we don't know where the owners, who the owners are. So and it's it's very dangerous.
Okay, well, thank you. Lieutenant Peterson, if you'd like to chat with him, give a little bit more details on the location, he can look into that for you.
Who is that?
Lieutenant Peterson, right over here.
Behind you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And sorry, ma'am, your name?
Evelyn Unger.
Thank you. Are there any other comments here in the chamber? Come forward, please.
Hi, my name's Margaret Garcia. I live in Clear Lake. I was just hearing her. I wanted to speak to again the paving of the streets. I know that somebody did some paving right there by the park, filled in the potholes, which is a huge improvement. But of course, I hope more is planned in that specific area and elsewhere because just like I had said previous, you know, people cannot just leisurely walk to the park, take a walk due to the condition of the roads. And these roads have been like this for decades. So, you know, I think someone's got to really just bite the bullet here and maybe start doing some of the roads, like she lives a few streets behind me. It's really a problem. Now, thank God, I don't have the wild dog problem in my immediate area and I'm I'm just grateful for that, but I can only imagine going out, dealing with potholes and then having to watch out for dog attacks. It's eighty year old woman. So I hope you guys get on that, you know, wild dogs running around, code enforcement, you know, whoever needs to get out there. But again, just your kind of reiteration on the road conditions. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Mr. Flora, is there a plan to repave or resurface any roads this year?
Yeah, we'll be repaving a little over twenty five miles of roads this year. I think we went over this before, but Clear Lake Park, the tree streets, and the areas south of Red Bud Park.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments here in the chamber? Yes, please come forward.
Just very quickly, I'm Ralph Volpe and Evelyn is my partner. She was a little, you know, shy as her first time doing, she's almost completely blind now. And what she failed to mention was she's fallen twice on our street. She has, both of her knees have been replaced and they want her to walk. And one time she had to wait till someone saw her laying in the road and came out and helped her get up. Now, I know this is a problem everywhere, but anyway, I'm concerned about her. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any on Zoom?
There are no plans raised on Zoom, Mr. Mayor. However, I did receive a, an emailed public comment from Supervisor Sabatier, which I can read now if you like.
Yes, please.
To Mayor Claffey and council members, I want to thank the Clear Lake City Department for ignoring jurisdictional lines. It would be easy for CPD to say that State Route fifty three is the jurisdiction of the California Highway Patrol and they are to enforce the rules of the road. However, it is well known to the city that many deaths from vehicles, accidents, especially those involving pedestrians, have occurred on that stretch of the highway going through the city limits. Instead of using jurisdiction as an excuse not to keep that area safe, CPD has gone above and beyond on how it tries to keep drivers and pedestrians safe on State Route fifty three. Multiple times this week, I have seen Officer Eagle and Officer Shores parked in the median or off the side of the highway, forcing people to slow down and pay more attention to the road. I am assuming that they may have also given tickets to some that traveled the highway at that time, too. I just want to take the moment to appreciate what CPD does to keep us safe, even in areas that are not necessarily their responsibility. Thank you for going above and beyond. Your actions are recognized. That concludes his statement.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or statements on Zoom?
There are no further comments or statements.
Wonderful. Thank you. We will now close public comment and Senator Flora, have you heard word from Supervisor Sabatier?
I believe he's ready now.
All right, we will take a step back here, go to the presentation from PEG TV Supervisor Sabatier.
It's possible to let me share my screen. I know it was asking earlier.
You should be able to share your screen now.
Thank you so much. All right, I wanted to give you an annual report on updates on PEG. And so this will be a simple presentation. There's not all that much that changes throughout the year, but at least it'll keep you up to date on some of the successes that we've had this past year. And so just again, to quickly go over our board, we have Clear Lake's Mayor David Claffey, we have Lakeport's Mayor Michael Froyo, I'm on there, I'm also the chair, we have the top of the echelon of the, all of the local jurisdictions. And then I apologize for the mistype, but that is Kevin Mack from Lake County Office of Education, who has replaced Brock Falkenberg. That way, we can continue to have a direct connection with our local educators and their facilities as well. We do still have one vacant position in the board. If you know somebody of interest that you think could benefit the board, please let them know that we are looking for somebody and if they communicate with me, I'll be able to give them a application for them to fill out. Our station manager, as you all well know, is Thomas DeWalt, and our chief editor is Adam Giordino. So for our operating budget, we have, let me just make sure, there we go, for our twenty three twenty five, we actually decreased our expenses. What we did was we reviewed our budget in order to really better understand what it is that we are truly spending. We used to have a lot of, we used to have a lot of things that we were hopeful to spend, but would be on our budget, but never would be utilized. And we wanted to get something that was a little bit more realistic so that we could better understand what our finances were. Really appreciate the work with Kathy Wells this past, I'm going to say the full past year, in order to better understand where we are, we've had some cleanup to do in order to really ensure that all the correct numbers were in the correct, correct budget units. Really appreciate the time that she spent on all of that. Out of the twenty six thousand seventy five dollars in expenses, we are looking at about twelve thousand dollars specifically to our station manager and forty eight hundred to our editor. They are both highly involved in all of the other work that is being done throughout the community and in placing all of those videos on our YouTube channel and on social media. Also, we do pay in return, it's not really an exchange of money, the city of Clear Lake is supposed to provide us eight thousand dollars. We put that money right back into the city as it pays for the facilities and the insurance, and I believe they also do the auditing for us, and that's highly appreciated. Our capital budget, our revenue pass-through is about sixty thousand dollars. We put down that we are planning to spend sixty thousand dollars. We've never done that, but we want to keep open. That way, we have our budget available to be able to spend through appropriations. We have purchased over, I believe it was about fifteen thousand dollars last year in our audio vision video unit. That video unit I'll be talking about in a second, but it has been an absolute change for the type of work that is being done over in PEG TV. And so our current activities, we continue to support local events. In fact, we've had a couple conversations, we haven't finalized, on how PEG can be a better sponsor for the city's concert series. We had some deals back in the day of how it is that we can support the concert series. We want to strengthen that. We want to make sure that it's an MOU that is brought maybe even to the city councils for approval. We really want to be a good partner and a good sponsor for those events. And of course, we're eligible for making those same types of opportunities happen with both the county and the city of Lakeport. What we've changed as of the past year, this was discussed in the previous annual update, is with the mobile AV unit, we have now been recording the majority, not all, but the majority of all the municipal advisory councils that the Board of Supervisors has. And so there are six total councils. We are doing videography for five of them. During those council meetings, we are looking at, we are doing Zoom, sometimes we're streaming straight on YouTube and we also recording it and then placing it on YouTube for further research, for further evidence of the meetings, creates transparency, allows people to go back and review what was discussed. Basically, the same exact type of access and transparency that the city council currently has with PEG TV. This has created new revenue streams. We are getting not only paid, the videographers are getting paid for the services, but also PEG TV is collecting money in order to ensure that we can have maintenance on our, on our technology, on our equipment, and being able to replace that technology and equipment as well. There's also new revenues that have come out of all this. We've been invited to the, for example, right now, we're working on the Silver Foundation for their senior summit. We've been invited there. We just got an invitation from Lake County Economic Development Corporation. We've been invited to the two Lakeport Town Halls that just occurred in the past three to six months. And so we are seeing an increase of interest to get these activities in our community to be, have a greater audience. And so we continue to do these things. In fact, one of the exciting things that we are planning to work on in the next three to six months is to start selling our services to do commercials. We're going to start with local agencies and we want to start with the local transit authority to do a commercial of taking the bus in order to try and increase the ridership and see how that works. That video will be done for free since it will be the first one, and we want to use that video as a promotion to try and sell those services to other local agencies in order to get them to have greater greater interest and greater attraction to the public. Our website that we've had, in fact, Mayor Claffey is the one who helped put it together, stays maintained by both Thomas and Adam, is lakepegTV.com. And again, we continue to try and fill a vacant seat. That is one of our future activities that we would like to do. You know anybody, please let us know. As stated, I will help them out with the application process. We haven't expanded yet into the schools. We are working on that. I did have some conversations with the, what's his, I forget his position, the sports person over at Lower Lake High School. And we are trying to see if we can get access to the videos that they are already producing of the football games. They have a contract with another agency that takes those videos and we would love to get highlights, show the highlights, and maybe have a end of the week sports highlights reel. That would be fun for the community to be able to watch that. We're going to continue to work on increasing our operational budget while our success is maybe minimal in comparison to the budget of the city of Clear Lake or the budget of the county of Lake. It is a great success to us to finally have outside revenue streams coming into our budget, and we're going to continue to work and offer more services to the community and keep that increase going. We are still interested in getting more viewers and more memberships, and all of that is by creating content. If you happen to know anybody who creates content, they can submit all of that to us for free to PEG TV and we will go ahead and post it on Channel Eight, on our YouTube channel and any other area that we can go ahead and put that there. We are still working. This is one of our unfortunate failures of the year. It's been a little bit of a struggle in order to get the technology to communicate appropriately. But the city of Lakeport is still not connected to PEG TV. We are working with MediaCom and we are trying to fix those problems. At one point, we were able to get the video, but not the audio, and we're continuing to diagnose the problem and try to fix it. We are doing an overall system upgrade for PEG TV as that upgrade goes from the main office that's in the city hall at Clear Lake. That's going to move on to the county of chambers and then eventually it'll get to Lakeport where at that point, we hope to fix and finalize the Lakeport PEG connection. And I believe that is my report for you unless you have any questions or comments for me.
Any questions in the council?
Good report. Thank you.
Wonderful. I will say the, the mobile town hall units are, I think, one of the biggest steps forward that PEG has made in a little while. They are highly used and I think incredibly valuable in the forms that they are used. So thank you for spearheading that, Bruno.
Oh, absolutely. And I just want to thank Thomas. I want to thank Sam Houston and I want to thank EJ Crandall. They are the ones who were kind of the brains behind that whole operation and we just happen to have the purse strings to make that possible.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to now jump back ahead to item H, the consent agenda. Does anyone here on the council want to pull something from the consent agenda?
Can I just have a comment? I see the report from Play Like Place Solutions and I like that they're starting finally the pilot program for recycling mobile that's badly needed in the community. So that's a good thing. Thanks. That's all.
Okay, anyone in the public want to pull an item? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back to council.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Slaton. Please vote in the portal.
Aye.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Clerk, moving on to business, item ten, consideration of resolution twenty twenty four dash fifteen supporting the application of Chelsea Investment for the Home Investment Partnerships Grant Program for the development of affordable housing at fifteen eight thirty seven Eighteenth Avenue in Clear Lake. Mr. Flora?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So I don't think we need to talk too much about the project. You're familiar with it at this point. Been working on this one for a few years. Unfortunately, sort of the, some of the, the, I guess, just the way the, the development is structured with being state-owned land is making it a little more challenging for the chosen developer, Chelsea Investment Corporation, to get the funding they need to move forward. And so we've had a number of applications. This council is approved to either support or apply on behalf of Chelsea Investment to get some funding. At this point, they're focusing on the home program through HCD, and so this will be a ten million dollar ask and we do have Heidi and Christopher from Chelsea Investment on the line if you want to hear a little bit from them, but they are continuing to, to try and identify funding to move this project forward. And so the city would be the applicant in this program, you know, they will prepare the application and whatnot and submit it. So with that, I guess I would just ask if Heidi and or Christopher wanted to, to make any comments to the council.
Hi, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, because sometimes I have a problem with Zoom. I'm Heidi Mather with Chelsea Investment Corporation. With me is my colleague, Christopher Galan. And we, just as Alan mentioned, we've been processing this project for the last few years now. This is eighty units of affordable housing for family. And, and so we just want to thank Alan and the entire team there at the city for all their support to help us get to where we are. This home funding source would be the last piece of the financing puzzle before we go in for tax, the federal tax credits. So the, the goal would be to be awarded this funding and then be able to go in for tax credits early next year and start construction the end of next year. So we really appreciate your support and request that you adopt a resolution per city staff. So we, we really appreciate your support and uh request uh that you adopt a resolution per city staff recommendation.
All right, any questions from the council? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for deliberation.
Um, I, no more. I uh moved to uh approve resolution 2024-15, the governing board of the city of Clear Lake. Here we authorize the middle of an application to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Home Investment Partnership Program and have selected the execution of a standard agreement. Any amendments thereto in any related document necessary to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program.
I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Slaton, a second from Councilmember Kramer. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 11, public hearing, uh consideration of updates to Clear Lake Municipal Code Section 3-5 and adopt modifications to the Lake County Fire Protection District Fire Mitigation Fees, Ordinance Number 269-2024. Councilman, uh, City Manager Flor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So um for you tonight is a public hearing related to um requested adjustments to fire mitigation fees from Lake County Fire Protection District. So we had a workshop a few weeks ago, um, you all participated in, but just want to give another little high level overview of the process. So um, and then we'll also be getting a similar presentation you got last time because it's also required as part of the official public hearing process tonight. Um, so this was initiated all the fire districts together. Hired a consultant to to do this study, um, which you have seen and um and seen presented. There has been some confusion about the process. It's a little different than some of the other districts are doing because of what was in our ordinance. So I've asked our city attorney to give the council and the public a little bit of an overview of of why we're doing it this way.
Yeah, happy to, happy to do that. So really focusing on what's before the council tonight, and that is amending the ordinance. So what I wanted to clarify the ordinance by the proposed action is just a first reading. Has nothing to do yet with approving the ordinance, um rejecting or modifying the ordinance in any way. It's really in looking back at section 3-5.8, we realize that the the Clear Lake ordinance set a very specific rate on fire mitigation fees and instead of ceiling. So in order to modify that, you you would need to modify the ordinance. And so in terms of making things more uh efficient and less bureaucratic, instead of having to each time update the ordinance with the first reading, second reading, and the 30 day wait period. What the proposal is in here is to modify the ordinance sets that instead of setting a specific rate, it would say the council can just adopt by resolution what that rate would be. So the district has proposed a rate. At this meeting would not be the time to to approve that or not. We'll certainly have the discussion and the presentation from uh Mr. Semenov on that. But it it is to hold this first reading to see if you like this, this process of of changing the the rate change through a resolution. That would be the time, so we'd do a first reading in theory tonight. Have the second reading at the next meeting, which would be April 4th. And in conjunction with that second reading, if it gets to that point, the council could have a resolution to approve certain, certain rate uh settings that you then have. And so just wanted to clarify that, that it is not um any, any kind of modification yet of the rate. It's just changing the the procedure to, because staff believes is a more uh efficient and less bureaucratic way to do so. Just want to share that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, I think um next we have uh Dimitri come up and he can go through his presentation.
Right, um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So what we will go through tonight is very similar to what uh we went through a couple of weeks ago. Um, it's a requirement for the public hearing uh process uh anytime that a fee is implemented or updated. So um, we'll go through the presentation that's essentially the same in content. Uh, we have received communication uh uh from you, Mayor, uh with some questions. And we will address those questions as we go along through the presentation. Um, and then um at any point in time, as we go through the material, if you have any questions that you would like to ask, uh, please do. So in this presentation will fulfill the public hearing uh requirement of the Mitigation Fee Act. So with this, if you can have the next slide, please. All right, so what are mitigation fees? Mitigation fees are also known as development impact fees or impact fees. Um, it's a one-time fee that's imposed on new development as a condition of approval. And it is uh needed for to, for that development to pay for the public facilities that are needed to serve that development. Um, so different states have different um legislation. Uh, most states reference um uh this type of fee as impact fee or development impact fee. In California, we have the Mitigation Fee Act. Um, and uh the common reference in California is the mitigation fees. Um, so mitigation fees are one of the ways that the California Legislature has put in place for public agencies such as cities, counties, special districts, to be able to fund the facilities to serve new development. As new growth is happening, uh, what we've seen over the years is uh with the limitation on the ability of agencies to raise revenues through uh property taxes, uh, uh, the mitigation fees are one of the um ways that the California Legislature allows public agencies to get to get the funding uh to keep up with the growth. Next slide, please. So some of the uh definitions of the terms that that are used. So a public facilities is pretty much any type of um of facility. And in this case, we're talking about the fire district. So it is any type of physical structures, uh land buildings, um whether it's fire stations, admin buildings, storage buildings, uh towers, anything of that nature, uh, any type of rolling stock, uh, that includes um apparatus, ambulances, uh, any type of specialty equipment. Um, you know, not a case in in um uh in Clear Lake, but um some fire districts even operate helicopters. So that will be covered by public facilities. And then as well as the, the major equipment that has long-term um, you know, service life. So that includes breathing apparatus, that includes gurneys, that includes um uh medical boxes, uh furniture at the stations. So those types of facilities um and the equipment that that are needed to provide the service to the community. So that's the the term public facility. Whenever we use the term, that implies all the physical assets that the district owns. Then the next one is what is development? Development is all new uh private residential and non-residential development within the district service area. Um, that term excludes uh public buildings. And it also excludes um any ADUs that are smaller than 750 square feet under the current laws. If the laws change at some point and um will allow assessment of units or assessment of fees on ADUs, uh, then that will change the program as well. But right now we're complying with the law from from that standpoint. And um uh, it, when we talk about new development and uh we talk about square footage, it's the the square footage under the roof. So uh uncovered patio would not count towards that, but a uh a garage, a covered patio, um, a carport, uh, as well as the living quarters, uh shop, uh, you know, any type of building that's under roof would be covered by the fee program. So mitigation fees uh cannot be used for services. It cannot be used for um deficiencies. It cannot be used for renovation, but mitigation fees are meant to fund the expansion of the system. So for example, um, an agency should not be using uh fees to fund replacement of existing equipment, but addition to the existing equipment can be used, uh, can be funded by the fees. Um, also upgrades um to uh from, in case of a fire engine, from a uh type one engine to a uh an aerial letter truck can be funded by the fees. That difference in terms of the uh the cost from the uh the previous type of apparatus to the, to the upgraded apparatus, as well as expansions of buildings, additional sleeping quarters, uh, equipment, new stations, um, all that would be covered by the fees. But the renovation and services cannot be uh covered by the fees. Next slide, please. So uh the history of the uh mitigation, fire mitigation fee in the city of Clear Lake. And the original ordinance was uh adopted in 1993. Really, there has not been any major change to the fee program itself uh since that time for 31 years. Um, the fee program uh set the the fee ceiling of um anywhere from 35 cents to $1.05 per square foot. Uh, there was 12 different uh categories of properties on, you know, spelled out in the fee ordinance, uh, such as single-family residential, unsprinkled, single-family residential sprinkled, um, and as well as height. Uh, and uh what has been happening over the uh the last number of years, the fee has been collected at a dollar per square foot. And we've talked previously about the the history, trying to figure out um how that came about. Um, since the program was put in place, a number of things have uh have changed. And what's not there, but um there used to be two separate districts, um, um, late, um, was it?
Lake Shore and Lower Lake.
Yes, Lake Shore and Lower Lake, that now it's one district. Uh, the district has started providing EMS services. Uh, a lot of the facility uh fees went up, uh, costs went up significantly. Uh, back in the nineties, a fire, a firehouse could be built in the range of $64 to $70 per square foot. Now the current costs are 600 plus uh dollars per square foot. Um, a class A engine pumper used to go for $200,350,000. And this is based on the supporting studies that were done when the fee was initially put in place. And now the current, current costs in the market are $700,000. Uh, water tender went from 110, 125,000 to 400, 550,000 dollars. So we're seeing very significant cost increases uh over the last three decades and, you know, which is not, not a surprise for anybody. Next slide, please. So legal framework, um, the mitigation fees, impact fees have been tested extensively by um uh by the court system. And um, a lot of the things that we have in in the laws are uh based on the um, on the case law. And um uh, the most important cases in the, in the history of mitigation fees are Nolan and Dolan. Um, and basically what comes out of the litigation is anytime a fee is implemented um or updated, uh, there needs to be a nexus. A nexus means a reasonable relationship. And three components of nexus as defined in the um, in the court decisions are the developer must create a need for facilities funded by the fee. Development must receive a benefit from facilities funded by the fee. And the fees must be proportional to the uh development's impact on the facilities. So the need, the benefit and the proportionality are the three uh components of the nexus as defined uh by uh by the case law. Uh, next slide, please. In California, as I mentioned, uh, we have the California Mitigation Fee Act, which is a part of the government code that really spells out how in California uh mitigation fee programs uh work and operate. And um, one of the key uh things in the law is anytime a fee is implemented or um updated, there needs to be five nexus findings uh made and documented. And those findings are uh the purpose of the fee needs to be identified. The use of the fee has to be specified. And then also the benefit, the need and the proportionality that are documented in the um uh in the court decisions also need to be supported. Next slide, please. So in terms of the uh fee adoption process, um, impact fees, mitigation fees, they are um imposed as a condition of development approval by land use authority. In uh that land use authority is vested with cities and counties. Um, fire districts do not have that authority. And um uh, but the practice in the state is that cities and counties adopt uh mitigation fee programs on behalf of fire agencies. Um, so the administratively, the process goes as follows. The fire district um prepares the nexus study, um, provides, uh, does the analysis, reviews the analysis, make sure that the analysis complies with the requirements of the state law. Um, and then adopts the 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 nexus study and forwards the nexus study um to the governing body, this uh of the city or the county, that they're asking to adopt the fee program on their behalf. Um, the process on the district uh side follows the same requirements of public hearing as on the city and county side. So the district has gone through the same process. They held the hearings, uh posted notice, had the hearing, uh adopted the nexus study forwarded to you um with a request to uh adopt it on their behalf. And now it's the same process here. The notice was posted. Um, we held the workshop, which is not a part of their uh legal requirement, but uh it's a good practice to have. Um, and then now is the public hearing. Um, and then at uh once you adopt uh uh the fee program, it goes into effect 60 days later. So that's the kind of the legal process, the legal, you know, and and the calendar as well. Uh, next slide, please. So the nexus findings um that are documented in the nexus study that uh that you have seen, that's part of your package, is um for the fee, the purpose of the fee is for the new development to contribute its fair share of existing and future uh one-time public facility costs. So that's the purpose of the fee. The use of the fee is to fund expansion of, in addition to the district's public facilities. So once again, uh, the fees can only be used to expand the system of the district. Um, and then the need, new development within the district service area increases the need for fire protection and emergency medical response public facilities. The benefit is new development within the district service area benefits from availability of fire protection and emergency medical response public facilities. And uh fire mitigation fee allocates to new development its proportion share of the district's existing and future public facility costs. So those are the five uh nexus uh findings that are required by the state law that are documented in the nexus study. Next slide, please. So uh talking about the methodology, how we went about calculating the fees. And this is where um, you know, we'll, we'll throw some numbers around and then answer the questions that we've received. So in terms of methodology, it's very important to, to properly account for the uh existing development uh within the service area. And um to do that, we, we went through, we started with the county parcel data set. Uh, the county provided um a very extensive spreadsheet that uh lists every um, every parcel within the county for the district that identifies uh the address, the owner, the APN, the square footage, the assessed values, the acreage of the parcel. And um we started with that. And then we started uh uh reviewing it to make sure that we capture all the existing development. Um, and um, so one of the first things we found out is that the county data set does not include uh manufactured homes. So, but it does mark the parcels that have manufacturers uh homes on them. So we manually went through every parcel um that had uh has a manufactured home, uh pulled it up on Google Maps, Google Earth, uh and made an estimate of square footage of structures on that parcel. Um, for parcels that have manufactured home communities, uh, we did uh the count of the the homes within, within the community and also made a determination based on the imagery, whether it's a single wide or double wide, and added that square footage into the data set. Then we also looked at um non-residential parcels. Uh, what we found is um quite a few of them, uh, they didn't have the right square footage information. So we pulled up any parcel that had an assessed value of over $50,000, um, but didn't have any um, any significant square footage assigned to it. And then manually looked up those parcels, um, did the estimate of square footage based on on Google Earth uh calculations and added that back uh into the data set. And we also went through the last five years of collect data, uh fee collection, uh pulled up all the information on the properties that pulled building permits and added that square footage into the data set as well. So the reason why it's so important is the approach that is utilized to calculate the fees is um, we use what um, what is called the capacity-based methodology. Capacity-based methodology is um, there is a system that provides the services and it can accommodate a certain amount of development, right? And um at some point where um it hits the limit, it needs to be expanded. Um, and the way fire services work is you cannot really say that this firehouse services this neighborhood or this street or this this home. Uh, the nature of fire service, you have a lot of different things going on. You have uh multiple calls for service. You have multiple accidents. Sometimes you need to have several um engines or um multiple vehicles responding to the same call. So you have traffic going back and forth. You may have, yes, uh, um, equipment that's housed at one station. Responding to a call and then there's a call received from a closer state, uh, closer address. So um, you know. Uh, the crew goes from, from a different location. So it's, it's a system that really provides coverage to the entire district area. You can't really um allocate, you know, uh, home to a station. It's, it's really uh the combined system. So um, and. Whether it's existing facilities or future facilities, they will serve both the existing development and the future development combined. Um, so we can't say that this one additional firehouse or an expansion of a higher firehouse uh will serve. The newly added homes. It's everything serving everybody. So the danger in undercalculating the existing development. Is that um, we have a lower base um, that uh should be. Um, bearing the, the bulk of the burden of the facility, uh, uh, of the district's facilities. Um, so that's why we were so careful to capture as much of the missing data in the county data set as possible. So um, because if we didn't go through the process. Um, the fee would unfavorably allocate costs to fu, future development over the existing development. So that was the reason why we're so careful in analyzing the existing development. So going back to the capacity-based system, so. Because of how fire districts operate, um, it's really, um, it's much more art than a science. In terms of figuring out the capacity, uh, how many homes you can, you can service, because again, traffic patterns, um. Uh, different types of calls, uh, calls happening at the same time, all that puts uh, demand on the entire infrastructure. So you can't scientifically, precisely calcu, calculate how many square feet of fire stations you need to service. Uh, you know, specific population or a specific area. Um, but when the system is not working, when the capacity is stressed out, you definitely know that. So, and that's where the um, we as a consultant, we rely on the expertise of the fire district. To provide us with the, with the scope of the system that they need to operate and to provide the service to, uh, to their area. So that, that answers, uh, that, that's our answer to your question. And do you feel that that's an adequate answer? Do you have any clarifications you would like to ask?
Um, well, no, I don't feel like that's an adequate answer. Um, to say it's more of an art than a science, are there no national standards or, or? At least I, I understand we can't be incredibly precise, but is there ballpark capacity estimates that you guys could point to?
Surprisingly, no, uh, because each area is so unique, the topography, the development patterns. Um, the density of development, um, the, you know, how many engines are located at each firehouse, how far they, they have to travel. So it, like surprisingly, we have not been able to identify that there is a u, uniform factor. That um, that should be used for, for fire agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so that was the first step is figure out how much development do we actually have? So the second step was to, to take a look at. And um, and try to identify how much development we can expect, right? And um, currently, we, we tried to tie to the um, California Department of Finance demographic projections that, which go through twenty forty. And um, we couldn't break out the district from, from the area in, in those projections. There is really. Um, one thing I do want to mention, that's completely off topic, but. The um, California Sp, uh, Special District Association is. Along with their national counterpart, uh, is really been putting a lot of effort to help. You put a legal definition of special districts into, into the law, which would allow the census to actually start tracking data on a district, uh. District by district basis. So if you get a chance to opine on that initiative, please support it because uh much more data will become available. And uh, much better information will, you know, will be um, available to serve the communities. But, so what we did is we matched the same term, twenty forty. And then we started, um, we interviewed the, the chief, um, and uh, looked. At what's been happening within the district and what are some of the major projects that are on, on, on a drawing map, right? To try to figure out how much development can uh, we can expect. So um, we made projections for um residential development and non-residential development. Um, as well as uh, looked at how much addition to residential development is, uh, you, it can be expected uh to happen. And um, Mayor, you asked why we didn't look at multifamily? Multifamily, when we, we went uh into the data set, multi, multifamily right now constitutes three point two seven percent. Of the square footage of residential development within the district. So it is a ter, very tiny um, uh, portion of the development. And it's really hard statistically, it's really hard to make a case to support, um, you know, or make any um significant analysis based on so little data. Um, such as, such a small sample. So talking to the district, the decision was made to, um, even though. Um, there is some evidence that multifamily does um, generate um, more call volume per square footage than single family. But we felt that given this, the very small portion of the multifamily development within the district, um, it. It probably is a little bit too early to make a um, a strong conclusion that multifamily should be paying more per square foot than single family. Because if you, uh, if uh, looking at the patterns and what we've seen from other agencies, uh, which supports the data. Is um, multifamily, if it's broken out, usually results in a higher fee per square foot. Um, at this point, the district doesn't feel that um, this would, this is justified, given how small uh portion. Multifamily um, is, you know, makes up of residential development within, within the district area.
Well, I, I raised the question because your projections have more multifamily square footage coming into the city over the next eighteen years than non-residential. Um, this, we know we have data around, there's many other communities and fire districts that have done these calculations. Um, if you were to, to analyze. The copious data that's out there, where would you come down and, and uh, using your allocation factor as the determining uh factor, where, where would you slot multifamily?
So um, what we've seen on multi, uh, on multifamily is the fee is usually uh twenty-five to thirty-five percent higher. Than uh, on multifamily than, than single family, whenever that such allocation is made. Um. A lot of this fee data though is based on. Um, methodologies that make a lot of assumptions about uh, population. Uh, it rarely takes into consideration actual call volume. Um, it's usually based on a uh, people per household and the square footage comparisons. Um, and a lot of the data also comes from um, the recent revision to the mitigation fee act. Which now requires that the fee is assessed on a per square foot basis for residential development rather than per unit. So I think uh, what we're going to see over the next several years is. Um, we're going to see the fee programs uh, coming into compliance with the law. A lot of, you know, additional evidence will be considered. Um, and also in case of Clear Lake, um, and the Lake County Fire Protection District. Is um, there's been a couple of large new developments built, multifamily develops built in the last year. So they're just coming online. We don't have enough data to, to analyze them. In terms of projections through twenty forty, even though they seem significant. Um, we're really assuming that a new multifamily project gets builds, gets built every three to four years. So it's not this massive amount of development. And um, the new law requires that mitigation, uh, that nexus studies are updated at least once every eight years. So um, if we're talking about one or two projects that will come online, um, between now and the next update. Um, and we'll have more data from the recent projects that have come online. At that point, it will make sense to update the fee program and see if there is a significant impact. Uh, difference uh, mo, for multifamily versus single family. So that would be our suggestion is just given how small multifamily is. Um, and. Lack of enough statistical data, just give it a little bit more time and next time, next time around, really take a look at it. And see, okay, based on data that we have, uh, what's the impact differential and does it warrant a separate fee level? Um, so that, that would be our suggestion. Um, so in terms of the existing development, existing development uh makes up about seventeen point four million square feet within the district. And the district covers the city as well as a large portion of, of the county. Um, over the next eighteen years, we're projecting an additional one point five million square feet of development, residential and non-residential to be built. Within the district. So it's uh, um, over the next eighteen years, it's uh, it's about um, eight, nine percent growth. Um, which is not significant by any stretch of imagination. It's a pretty, uh, pretty slowly growing area. Um, so it's not anything that um, extraordinary that we expect to happen. So by twenty forty, we're, we're expecting the total development to make up about eighteen point nine million square feet. So then the next, that was the first step is figuring out how much development do we have, how much development we expect. So the next step was um, to take a look at what is the, what are the public facilities that are owned and operated uh by the district? And what additional public facilities are needed. To um, uh, to accommodate fu, uh, future growth. And um, that number on the combined basis comes out to about thirty-seven million dollars. So that's the value of the um, of the public facilities that are operated by the district already and that need to be added. And um, that plan, uh. You know, calls for construction of one additional uh fire station and um. As well as acquisition uh of an aerial uh ladder truck. That, those are kind of the big ticket items. And at this point, I would like to ask uh, the chief to come up and explain why the additional firehouse is necessary. Is, is that okay?
Yes, please, chief.
Afternoon, how are you? Willie Sabana, local fire chief. Um, you know, when we look at the growth of the community, strategic placement of your fire apparatus and equipment is essential. So as that area grows, we're gonna have an increase in traffic, pedestrian traffic, and there's gonna be a lot more activity. And we look at response to fires and emergencies, when you go into cardiac arrest, we have four minutes to start breathing for you, look at some brain death. So having those resources there at Station Seventy-one, which is the airport, is gonna put that response time within a pretty much national standard. So our projection, my projection, is that we currently have Station Six-Five, we cover a hundred and sixty-five square miles. So Six-Five would cover from the entire south end of Anderson Ranch Parkway, which we go clear out to the Third Creek Crossing in Knoxville, Barriessa. And we go all the way to eight thousand, um, DNA Ridrock, Highway Twenty-nine and to Hoffaker. And then we go all the way to Westwood Mobile Home Park, which is um, Canock-Di Vista Drive. So we've got a pretty good sporadic area that Six-Five area would cover. The new Seven-One station would cover from Anderson Ranch North all the way to approximately Olympic Drive. And cover the east side of that highway. The Station Seventy, which is our current station, would cover the rest of that population of within the city. And then expand all the way out along to the peninsula. The twenty-year plan is that the peninsula were to grow is to build and staff a station that will pick up the peninsula. And come all the way probably down to the area of the Goose Neck. So it is critical, the response times play a big part in where you, you put your, your equipment and, and your facilities. And it's, you know, we are a fire department, but uh eighty percent of what we do is EMS and that critical time getting on scene i, is instrumental. Uh, and the need for the aerial, when we look at. The nexus study, we look at stor, you know, two stories are greater, those can be essential for the rescue operations and even fire containment to get above that and be able to have. Your elevated master stream as well as your ground resources doing suppression. When we look at the fifteen thousand five hundred, that's a single story, but it's a footprint. So we're not talking the small mall or um. A Trader Joe's, we're talking the big, large, where you have that much of a, of a, of a footprint. Where it does take that coordinated effort of elevated fire streams of greater than a thousand gallons a minute. Along with establishing and securing with your engine, your fire department connection, which operates your sprinklers, which keep the fire, what we call in incipient phase, hopefully. Um, and then provide those ground resources to do that interior contain, control and extinguish the fires.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. All right, so um, the combined value of existing and, and uh planned uh facilities is about thirty-seven million dollars. Then we looked at what, how much money the district has in its mitigation fee fund, and that was about one hundred forty-one thousand dollars. So we subtract, subtracted that from the value of the facilities. So the remaining balance is thirty-six point nine million dollars. So that's the cost. Of the facilities that needs to be allocated to the entire existing and future development to calculate the, the fair share. Per square foot of development, right? Um, so it's the entire system of the district that the district operates. Divided by the total square footage of existing development and future development as well.
So the existing development. But you, you, you can only, the nexus is that you only can cha, charge development fee on new development.
Correct.
So shouldn't you subtract out the existing?
No, so um, the reason why you, uh, we value the entire system of the district, existing and future facilities. Right? So the total cost, what they have and they would, what they still need to add um, to, to their system. And then we divided across the entire population that is currently being serviced and the population that will be added. Right? Because uh, that, that allocates the total cost to the total population. So every, everybody, even existing residents, they have to um, uh, to. Participate in the fair share of the costs.
But they already have an existing building and they're not gonna pay any more development fee.
Correct, they won't. But uh, at the same time, they do pay uh some property taxes, they do pay some fees. Um, and um, the district does generate uh revenues through grants, for example. So um, they have paid the fees as well. So that's reflected in the value of the existing facilities.
Are you getting this?
No, I don't. I'm not getting it. Sorry.
He's a stupid one. So I always ask him, is that totally not?
I, I think if you just have for new development, then new development pays the fee that. That generates the additional equipment, additional, whatever it is. But I don't see why you have to include the existing development. They already paid their fee.
Right, so um, to, to maybe help illustrate it uh differently. If this was empty territory, like there was nothing was built, right? And we were expecting the growth from zero to eighteen point nine million square feet. Okay, and there was no facilities and all the thirty-seven million dollars of facilities had to be built, right? What would be the fee? That would be thirty-seven million divided by um, eighteen point nine million. That would be the fee per square foot. Right? So um, it's the same methodology to calculate the fee going forward.
So I don't think how you can calculate as a nexus, though I, I'm, I'm not following with that.
So um.
Maybe I'm not seeing it, I'm, I'm.
So it go, it goes back to how the fire system operates. The, everybody benefits from the entire system.
So what you're saying then is, is that the existing facilities are not adequate enough?
So what we're seeing is the existing facilities will sir, uh, will have been serving. And will continue to serve the existing population as well as new population. And whenever the additional facilities are added, they will serve not just the new population, but also the existing population. So to make sure that there is a fair share allocation per square foot of residential development. You have to take the entire cost and divide it across the entire development within the district.
Doesn't seem right. Am I thinking wrong? I don't sure.
That thirty-seven million total costs is adding twenty, twenty-four dollars or?
Twenty, twenty-three dollars.
Twenty-three dollars. Not going back to nineteen, nineteen.
No, no, for, for, what, what we did though for existing faci, uh, building facilities is we used the insured value. As the proxy for the, for the cost. So which is uh, um. Arguably, if the facility burned down, uh you could collect that much insurance proceeds to to rebuild it.
Okay, so that's, that was how you came up with.
I'm sorry. So that's how you came up with the the thirty seven million was to go to insured replacement cost? Of the buildings and how about the equipment?
Uh replacement call, cost of the apparatus as well.
And insured cost replacement of replacement.
Okay.
Let's continue.
Okay. So when, when we did that, uh the net cost is thirty six point nine million dollars. And we allocated, like I said, across the development footprint within the district. And then we come to the next question that merit that you asked. Is um we started looking at, is there a significant um difference in terms of how much? Uh demand uh residential and non-residential development is placing on the fire department. Okay, and um we went through two years, two full calendar years of call data. Um twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two calendar years. Because at that time, when we were doing this, it was still twenty twenty three, so we didn't have the full year of data. And then twenty twenty, because of the COVID, we um we felt it was not the the right year to look at the call volumes. Uh because of how much time people spent at home. And what we found in those two years, on a uh per thousand square feet of residential development. The district um uh responded to zero point four one of a call. So within two years, each thousand square feet of residential development resulted in zero point four one service call. Okay, um at the same time, a thousand square feet of non-residential development resulted in zero point nine seven. Uh calls in two years, so more than double. Um the the call volume for uh compared to residential development. Okay, and um so. If. A quick case could be made um that the fees should be allocated based, based on the call volume. Um and if that was the case, then resident, a non-residential development would end up with a fee that's almost double. The fee of the residential development. But then we um we started thinking with and discussing with the district. Is whether or not that that information seems right. Like when they respond to to phone call, to to service calls, what what actually happens? And we found this, a lot of the time, uh when they do respond to a call for service. At a non-residential address, it's really a resident who is there that that needs service. So when we started trying to um. Based on the district's experience, see if there is a way to to adjust that calculation. Um based on the true service demand. And the district felt that um that the delta between residential and non-residential is not double, or more than double. But actually about twenty five percent more for non-residential development than for residential development. So that that's just based on experience and um and seeing. Um you what type of calls they're getting, what's hap- what happens when uh when the calls are made. So the allocation factors, instead of being two to one. Um were uh set at one for residential and one and a quarter for non-residential. And that was the um uh the base factor that we used to allocate. The cost per square foot of residential and non-residential development. And when, when that adjustment was made. Residential development ended up with a dollar eighty nine per square foot. Uh the the alloc- allocated cost of the fire district system. And non-residential development ended up with two dollars and thirty six uh cents per square foot um for the district facilities. Do you have a question?
Um, when you're allocating residential development and non-residential development, i.e. commercial. Did you go back over the last, what, to thirty years? And and say, okay, we have X number of houses and we've got. And multiple family dwellings and X number of commercial buildings and just took that same ratio and moving it forward. Did you look at that?
No, so we looked at just two years of calls, so call data is uh kind of the the proxy for the demand.
So for two years, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Correct.
For houses and and multifamily residential that were built and commercial that were built.
Correct.
Okay, did you give any thought? You probably gave some thought, but any. Um yeah, obviously, I I liked your comment, uh more art than science, and I think that's what. What you're looking at here, and maybe unnecessarily, but. You know, the the hope is that we're gonna be developing. The shopping center. Going forward and some other, well, those are public facilities, but which is gonna be a major. Major construction, and it's gonna take a lot of houses to add up to the amount of footage from the commercials going forward over the next. I don't know, five, ten years, or five to eight years, maybe, till your next nexus study. It's something to think about.
Right, so one of the challenges, we thought about like going further back, right before COVID and and pulling some uh some cold data. The challenge with that is it becomes really hard to track. How much development actually was present back several years ago. Right? Um we could try to back out uh back out the fee data. And um and make that the that the ju- uh the adjustment. But the further back you go, the less certain you are. Um so all of a sudden. Uh you know, we have the precise number of um of service calls. Your district keeps really good data on that. But going back and having annual data for how many square feet of development we have, that's really, really problematic. Um so um.
But that's, but that's really, really important in going forward and projecting these costs.
Correct, correct. So one of the things that we had, uh one of the conversations we had with all the fire districts is how important. Going forward is the record keeping data. And really truly understanding what's happening, um you know, looking at how much multifamily. What type of multifamily, right? Because uh different multifamily projects would have different uh call patterns. If you have um, you know, age restricted multifamily housing. Um it would generate we- way more call volume than uh just regular multifamily housing. Um so um you know, th- those aspects would have to be taken into consideration and and really paid attention to. Um because it it always comes and. We're, we now live in the age of data, right? And um capturing the data is is more and more important, and capturing the right data in the right way allows us to make better decisions. So what we're dealing with right now is trying to make the best decision with the data that we have. And then also figuring out what data we can collect better going forward. So that next time around, we have to make the uh, you know, the the fee adjustment. That we're um, you know, uh we adjust any methodology to reflect uh what what we learn. Uh about the patterns of the of the service demand. Does that make sense? So um that's uh that's the allocation that that um the district felt very comfortable with. Uh the allocation factors and uh and the cost allocation. Oh, sorry, next slide. Right, so then we looked at what's happening in the surrounding jurisdictions, right? We looked at um the fee studies that were adopted in twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three in here in the Northern California area. And uh there were several, um we were able to find uh six. Studies in this proximity that have been updated for fire fees specifically. And uh there's two studies that we found in Yola County, Espardo and Willow Oaks. So they um just completely did away with distinctions between uh residential, non-residential. Everything gets charged the same fee. Um for Espardo, it's dollar forty eight per square foot, for Willow Oaks, it's dollar sixty nine per square foot. Then City of Waireka, um they settled also on a flat fee regardless of the development type of. Uh type of two dollars and three cents per square foot. Um and then uh three districts had um a different consultant that um calculated. Uh fees for different types of property and um. We can't say that we're completely comfortable with methodology that they use, given the number of assumptions that they made. And not relying on the actual data and and the call volume. A lot of the uh assumptions were used based on, well, there's so many people on average nationwide per square foot of office space or retail space. Um and. What we, what we've seen over and over is each region is very, very different. Um and sometimes applying um each property type uh can be very different. So sometimes applying nationwide uh assumptions to a local economy can result in numbers that. Don't always make sense. So but in. Nevertheless, in those three areas, um Anderson L C S D, single family uh fee is two dollars and thirteen cents per square foot. Multifamily fee of two fifty four per square foot, retail commercial is two fourteen, and offices two eighty seven. Um then in uh Sonoma County Fire Protection District, um single family dollar seventy five, multifamily two thirty one. Uh retail commercial dollar ninety five and office three twenty. And then Sonoma Valley Fire Protection District, single family one seventy two, multifamily two ninety one. Um retail commercial dollar ninety five and office three twenty three. So those are, tho- those are the recently adopted fees. And another two things that are very, you know, kind of common across the the all these fee programs. Is each fee program has an automatic annual inflation adjustment. And also every fee program has an administrative surcharge component of varying between two percent and four percent. So that's, that's what's, uh the trends has been in the region in nor- in surrounding areas over the last couple of years. Um next slide please. So as a part of this effort, uh we updated. The 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 fee calculations for all five districts within Lake County. And really looked at each specific district, each development patterns. Each fire district's system, like what stations they have, what apparatus they they have, what they need to add. And um provided the fee calculation for each district separately. So and. Um these are the fee programs that are um currently being proposed in Lake County for all five, five fire districts. So Lake County Fire Protection District, um including the two percent administrative surcharge. Uh a fee of dollar ninety three per square foot for residential and two forty one. Uh uh per square foot of non-residential. Another thing that um as we were calculating the um um the demand. One, one of the things that uh uh came up was something that chief referenced. Is certain buildings, certain types of buildings, they require the district to have a, an aerial ladder truck. Um and those two types of buildings are either um three-story and higher structures. Or large footprint um kind of single, you know, single-story big box development. Uh over fifteen thousand five hundred square feet. So and really, that's uh that's reserved for, you know, super centers, for uh tenants like Walmart, Target. Um and a lot of the smaller, you know, retail uh goes under that square footage. So um. And we looked at what would be the difference in going from. A type one engine, which is a typical fire truck that you see on the street, to an aerial ladder truck. And uh. So what we saw was the um. The increase is about six hundred fifty thousand dollars. To to upgrade from a regular fire engine to to an aerial uh aerial ladder truck is about six hundred fifty thousand dollars. So um looking at. Um how much new development is expected and making some assumptions about how much of that development would fall within. The the three-story and above or large uh single stories uh uh footprint. If we allocated that to just that development, it would result in a surcharge of five dollars and thirty one cents per square foot. So which is completely unreasonable and um. It would pretty much make sure that no new development of that size happens. Um so recognizing that there is certain development within the district that would benefit from having an aerial engine already and then um. Understanding that not everything can be placed on new development. Um the district decided to limit the surcharge for these types of properties for three-story residential. Three-story and above residential and um non-residential fifteen thousand five hundred uh square feet footprint. To fifty uh fifty cents per square foot. So that's the surcharge um that's on that the schedule. So um that's Lake County, dollar ninety three per square foot for residential, two forty one non-residential. And a high impact surcharge of fifty cents per square foot on top of either one. Um Kelsoville, um uh dollar fifty across the board. Uh Lakeport Fire Protection District, um two dollars per square foot for residential, two forty five non-residential. And fifty cents uh high impact surcharge, similar to what we just described. Uh North Shore two oh two across the board, South Lake County, two dollars per as then uh for residential, two sixty three for non-residential. So these are the fees that um are going to the county um um as well as to the city of Lakeport. Uh for Lakeport Fire Protection District um as well, and the hearings are set, I believe, April sixteenth um for that. Um so all fee programs include the two percent administrative surcharge that's reflected in those amounts. And then all of them include automatic annual inflation adjustment. So next slide please. So what the district is asking you to approve and what the nexus study um uh documents is. The residential square uh fee, base fee per square foot of dollar eighty nine. And administrative surcharge of two percent of four cents per square foot, uh totaling one dollar ninety three cents. And then uh base fee of two thirty six for non-residential with administrative surcharge two percent, five cents per square foot. Uh adding up to two forty one, and then high impact surcharge of forty nine cents per square foot with administrative surcharge of one cent. Um per um uh totally fi- fifty cents per square foot. So that's he would apply to all new development and includes an automatic annual inflation adjustment. Um and um the administrative surcharge, what it allows the districts is to cover the the costs of compliance. With the requirements of the mitigation fee act. So and that includes um. Record keeping, the preparation of annual reports that are required by by the act. As well as uh the regular updates to the nexus uh nexus studies. And I believe that's. Oh, so uh projected fee revenues. So um basically, what we're seeing is a typical house uh within the uh residential house. Within uh the district is about sixteen hundred square feet. So currently, at a dollar per square foot. Um it's the the fee, the fire fee per house is about sixteen sixteen hundred dollars. And with the increase, we're looking at a fee of roughly thirty uh thirty one to thirty uh two hundred square feet. Uh on average, per per a typical home. So um. Uh in terms of the projected fee revenue, and that's total fee, it's not the increased fee, but the total fee revenue. Uh projected over the next eighteen years, it's uh three point one million. In terms of planned facility costs is nineteen point five million. Um you know, with available, a little bit of money in mitigation um fee fund, hundred, one hundred forty one thousand. The district still need, needs to identify funding sources, whether it's through bonding, through general fund revenues. Through grants of sixteen point two million dollars to um to cover the costs of the uh of the planned facilities. So the the mitigation fee is just a small component of the the funding program for the facilities that the district is looking to develop. Um and let's see. I believe that answers all the questions that you asked.
Uh in email, yes. I I imagine there's gonna be a few more today.
No, I I wanted to make sure that we didn't omit anything.
No, I I appreciate the very thorough uh report um and I've had a chance to dig through it a bit. Uh you've done a great job collecting uh a lot of uh information on on our city and our district. One of the things you mentioned, I just wanna, I just wanna confirm this. You said there's a danger in undercalculating the invest, existing development. Based on the work that you've done so far, are you confident that you haven't undervalued the existing development?
Um I would say with ninety nine point eight percent confidence level that that we've captured as much as we could have.
Excellent.
Um it's um. We've actually, I mean, we've blown the budget on that particular exercise very significantly. It's uh.
Well, I appreciate that. Um and and that's gonna drive, I guess, some of my follow-up questions here. Let's start with the allocation factor. Um so you have it right now, residential at uh one point zero. Non-residential development at one point two five. Um if we were to use the numbers, uh the direct data that is supplied above. Um we'd basically be looking at one slash two point. Um, we'd basically be looking at one slash two point three four. Does that sound accurate? As an allocation factor, so two point three four for non-residential development?
You know what, um.
It's okay, hang on.
I can pull up the spreadsheet and actually run the calculation on the spot. That'd be of interest.
Uh, yeah. Um, I actually have it too. So. Um, based on that, if we went with uh the direct data, we'd be looking at basically this cost per square foot, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, that, that wha- what's up there is what we, we started with initially.
Okay. So there's, there's a little bit of art in that, in that allocation factor, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you also did the study for Lakeport as well, correct? Um, and so if we look at some of the work you did there. Um. You came back with a cost per. Two dollars and eighty nine cents per square foot, correct? And then that was reduced to two dollars and then two forty five per square foot for non-residential. Um, and I think the basis of that was the district uh believes in affordable housing or something along those lines. Can you clarify?
Yes, so um if you compare this study to the studies of uh some other districts where. Um, I believe Lakeport and South Lake, um, they lowered. Um, the requested fee amounts from the calculated allocation. What happened there is. Um. Basically, tho- uh in, in both cases, the districts made a decision to forego some of the fee revenue. Um, so they, um, it was coming out to uh in case of Lake, Lakeport, two eighty nine per square foot. Um, and the district felt that um in case of housing. Um, you know, going above two dollars per square foot, um, it would be challenging. Um, same thing, you know, charging two eighty nine per square foot for non-residential is also a bit too steep. Um, so they um, they came in with a proposal to use charge lo- uh lower fee amounts. And in their case, it does not create a rebalancing of the fee like what we saw. And uh with uh Lake County Fire Protection District. Because the, the calculated fee amount would have been so much greater. In this case. Um, the, the changing the factors. Um, because the, the calculated fee amount is not that. Um, if you go across the board, is not that much higher. Um, so the district is not asking to reduce the fee. It's just the, the art is. How much demand do we allocate re- uh residential versus non-residential?
Is politically appetizing or incentivizing to a developer, correct?
Um, well. Sorry.
Yes.
I. You're gonna speak.
Also, I was gonna point out is that representatives of Lakeport are here, myself, and I do have a board member here. While he can't speak for the board. He can speak to his uh position on the uh, on, on this. I'm not trying to. Override, so unless I'm called back.
I'm asking the questions about Lakeport, so I feel it's appropriate. Go, go ahead, I had to speak, yeah. You know, I'm, I'm asking about Lakeport and you're here, so.
Patrick Wright, I'm the fire chief for Lakeport Fire Protection District. And uh when we looked at the numbers of two eighty nine uh and higher. Uh, for both residential and commercial, and we looked at what other um. Other fees were being charged for new development from other agencies. The concern is across the board, and I can't speak for those other agencies specifically, but I can tell you the conversations that we've had. Dealing with those agencies and Lakeport Fire. As they relate to new development, the concern is, are we dissuading development? Not low-income development, not malls or commercial development, but are we? Is, are we going to be dissuading development? And uh. The consensus across the board with my board was, there is a concern with the two eighty nine cost. And is there another way that we can make those costs up in the future? Um, you know, my district, the, we have a tax measure. And while we can't, we're limited as to what we can use that tax measure for as well, this mitigation fees limits us. The, the, we really did not want to, and what we did hear from our residents loud and clear was, look, you know. You're going to be getting additional money through the tax measure and. You know, we have some concerns over what development is going to cost us. So my, my board elected to. Drop the cost and. We also reshaped our ask, which was, we looked at what was going to be. What we were looking at down the road as far as projects for the district for facilities development.
Gotcha.
Specifically, facilities development.
Well, Chief, I, I appreciate that sentiment and that's sort of what I'm getting to here. So I, I, I do appreciate that that is a consideration the district had. Uh, I guess my question would then be for your district, your board, or Mr. Seveno for your company. What, what expertise is in your organization? That uh was able to make that determination as to what would be appropriate for the community based on um attractiveness of development?
So past history for starters.
Um, well, uh, so I understand there's metrics. I'm wondering, are, is there specific folks within your organization that specialize in this?
In Nexus Study?
No, in, in, in attracting developers and understanding the push and pulls of the market.
Well, we're not courting development, but we hear from developers on, on a daily basis when they come through with their permits. Uh, looking in, and, and permit fees and the understanding. And, and then we've also went, reached out to our community. Talked to developers, you know, that are. Um, I don't wanna say influential, but prominent within the, in the community to get their feelings on this as well as individuals that. That may be building on, or, or developing on a lesser scale, including our business owners. Uh, asking, you know, what is the price per square foot, you know, of retail space and where is this going? Is it going up? Is it going down? Do we need new retail? You know, if we're looking at new retail space, you know, is it going to be affordable or comparable? To draw people from the spaces they're in into the newer spaces. So there's, we've had those conversations. I don't know that there's. You know, uh, if we're talking MBAs, doing, you know, uh, deep dives into analytics, no, that's not happening.
Okay.
Um, the fact that our board, just like your council, are local community members. And they hear from their community, their constituents. Um, you know, that we have long, we have, we have long time residents and long time. Uh, members of the district that, that do carry some value and have some historical knowledge and what works, what doesn't work.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, cool.
Chief, uh, did you do any um in talking to. The community, to the Lakeport City Council, to whoever. Uh, any idea of the, of the ratio of residential to non-residential development you're expecting? Going forward for the next, well, eight years.
Yeah, and we're, we're confident with the Nexus Study and the numbers that were produced in the Nexus Study with, with where we've come from and where we, where we're going.
Where we're going. That's, I think that's more important, quite honestly, is where we're going.
Right, but we always have to look at the history and, and certainly, we know, the nice, before all this started. We know of a couple of big developments, some that never materialized, that actually cost the district. And then uh particularly, there, there's one on the north end of the district that never materialized. We built a fire station out of it. And we've never been able to staff it. Um.
That was a large housing development, if I remember correctly.
And resort.
Resort, yeah.
Uh, you know, we have currently on the, on, on the horror. Future builds, we have a large commercial track uh that is on the west side of town. Uh, we have a large residential track that's getting ready to be developed on the west side of town or has potential. We have a redevelopment area uh that's right off the freeway. Everybody knows it. It's at Ugly Shopping Plaza. Um, that is slated for redevelopment. So there's, there, we, we have some really good ideas right now of. Where we're going with that. We know where our development is stagnated on the south side because there's no water available and the city can't annex. So on and so forth.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I know I, I sent this in this direction, but I appreciate you, you speaking up. Um, I do have one more Lakeport question, but it's small calculations. Oh, for the chief? Oh, yeah. Please, Chief, if you could come back up, we have a, a second question.
So what were your fees before uh before you guys raised them? What were their?
Well, we haven't raised our rates. So.
But they're the same.
We're in the same position as all five fire districts. We are all stuck at a dollar per square foot for the last thirty one years.
And, and if, okay, so that's good. I wanted to know that. Thank you very much. My next question for that.
Thank you, Chief. Give the man some water. Appreciate it. Um. So I, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm, I really am appreciative of the, the chief and the, the thought that he puts into that. Um. I am concerned that it's fire districts making those determinations and not county supervisors who are courting development and, and the city in this case. Um, one last piece about Lakeport, and that is the, the uh ladder truck surcharge. So you mentioned that the difference here is six fifty, but in Lakeport, I believe the report said it was four hundred. What's the discrepancy there?
So the discrepancy is um. How much the, the standard engine is running. So each district has its own needs and they choose a certain um. Um. Configuration of the equipment. Um, and um. The, in, in case of uh Lake County, and I can, I can.
That's fair. I guess my question is, how did we end up with a uh perfectly precise fifty percent surcharge for both communities?
Um, because both, you know, going back to the art versus science. If you fully charge the, the, the impact, you're coming out with a number that is so much larger.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because I didn't. Looking at the data and didn't see, but if it's more art than science, I, I, I understand that to some extent.
The, the, the surcharge in case of Lake County Fire Protection District went from fully calculated five thirty one per square foot to fifty cents per square foot. So it's like one tenth of what it actually cost the district uh to, to upgrade.
Okay. Um, let's get back to capacity and the use of the capacity-based methodology. Um, you know, as the chief said. Adding another fire station will help us improve uh. Response time to, to higher national standards, but it's my understanding that impact fees, that's laudable and we want that. But impact fees uh shouldn't take that into account. It should be based on what the existing level of service is, correct?
Um, no, the, uh, the fire district has the, or any agency for that matter. Um, they. Um, they have a lot of leeway in determining what they need to provide the service. So um. If the um, one of the conversations I had with the fire chief and um not. Not being local, like I, I can't be as, as detailed, but uh if there is a significant development um by the airport. Slash peninsula. Um, if I'm not watching it, um, it will create disruption in the, in the traffic patterns. That will result in um extended response time. Uh, from the current stations. That's why they um, they felt that there's a need. For an interim station in, in um, in between the two existing stations to be able to accommodate uh local volume in, in response time. So um, that's uh, that's where the district is determining what type of facilities and infrastructure they need. To be able to provide the service that they feel they're, they're held on.
Okay, so. Sorry, cut some over.
Jump in on the one question. So is that um in addition to the, the building that's there, Chief, or is that uh? Adding, tearing that down, adding a whole new structure?
Yeah, uh, the, the current station seventy one is, is an old brick building that's been there probably since the fifties or sixties. Definitely not applicable and can't live in it. So, yeah, it would be a, a complete new facility. It would be, you know, both a, a two, a two base station with the ability for. Two to maybe four pieces of equipment max, meaning a utility, an ambulance, rescue and an engine. Um, and then sleeping facilities for, for the staff. Um, ju- just real quick, Mayor, on the difference on engines is, you know, you have a type one. And the type one that, that I prefer is about six hundred and fifty thousand. The recent mend of one that Lakeport purchased was eight hundred thousand. So it's really, we spec out the type of engines that fit in our community. So if you look at the Lakeport engine length, width. And capabilities are a lot different. If you see our newer engines are shorter because of our maneuverability and getting around, so. The, the, the figures is based upon what type of engine you build. You can build a type one anywhere from six fifty to two point five million. Depends upon how you want it equipped. And, and we don't support the longer length because of the angle of approach and departure in a lot of our roads, so. I think that's kind of where the difference, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars between four hundred thousand and, and that's six fifty.
You got that same thing on the ladder when you get a jazz.
Yeah, you know, I mean, so, so for, for a ladder, you know, they're reaching um about two million dollars right now. You can get, uh, you know, depending upon who the manufacturers are. And so they're definitely not cheap. And, and, and our history has been looking at uh surplus, which we've bought surplus. And we referred two of them over the past couple of years to a savings of the district of well over a million and a half dollars. Um, the first one was three hundred and forty five thousand. That was in pretty good shape. Couple of things to it. The O E S engine we bought for forty thousand dropped sixty five into it. That's the new station or engine sixty five eleven for Lower Lake. And based upon that call volume, that's gonna be a good ten, hopefully fifteen-year engine, you know, so we aren't. Going to look at, because even with, with this passing and this having those funds, it's not gonna be nearly enough to, to buy the things we need. And we got an A F G grant assistance, a firefighter's grant that bought a water tender, four hundred eighty six thousand dollar water tender. So we are looking continuously how to maintain and continue the growth of the department to match the, the city and the district. And this is a small portion of that. It's not gonna stop us from looking at those, um, those one-time offers, but those grants. Aren't, aren't sustainable. I mean, you know, once they get rid of the safer grants than the A F G grants, you know, all that, that is gonna come to a standstill.
Is that ladder truck gonna be new or you're gonna be looking for something out there?
I'll be looking for something used. Um, you know, and that's the whole thing is that. For, for, for my department is that our type two, our wildland engines are more active than anything. Um, because we run them in the winter time because some of the road conditions, we can't run a type one. So our type two wildland, so your type one is primarily structure, your type two is a wildland. Type three is kind of that wildland urban interface. And then our type sixes are like an F five fifty chassis, that, that we have one of those as well. So our type two or type two, three combo has gotta be a new one because it's got a lot. I mean, our last one was a twenty fourteen. She's got a ton of miles on her. So our two threes are always gonna be a new replacement. The latter, it's not gonna get as much use. So am I gonna look at spending two million?
Twice during, during my time on the board.
Well, I'm, I'm just, you know, we, we are gonna look for a used one because there's not the need to spend that expenditure. But the, the cost of, of an aerial ladder is substantial. You know, just the, the turntable, every ten hours you have maintenance on the turntable and annual testing on the ladders and a lot of safety things, so. There's a huge maintenance and ongoing cost with that ladder, so um when you buy a used one, you don't have that one or two year warranty. So I hope to answer your questions.
I, I, yeah, I have one question. The uh, you know, Sacramento is uh really pushing for ADUs and now there's another one. E D U enclosed or something. Is that, is that uh, is that? That you know, charge for ADUs, is that from Sacramento or is that?
I, I have been not sure what you're talking about, I'm.
It looks like you might.
So the, the current law prohibits charging impact fees, mitigation fees on uh accessory dwelling units. So you cannot do this. This is.
There's a new one coming that is enclosed, it under, under the main roof. It's a separate living unit. I mean, the county was talking about it. I think, I'm not sure if they call it an E D U or something. It says.
Once it's put into law, then we'll know what, what we have to work with.
I believe it's already is.
Okay, I, I, I have.
So would you charge for that? Sure, you couldn't charge for that either, right?
Um, so the district will not do anything that uh is prohibited by the law.
Okay, well, yeah, it wouldn't, it's.
Um, if it's okay with everyone, let, let's take a, a five-minute break. I know you've been uh on your feet for a bit and I appreciate that. I know some council members. Um, need a moment as well, so uh we'll take a, a five-minute recess. We'll uh return at seven fifty two. All right, we're going to come back to order here. Um, what's a, I I know I've talked a lot as well. Let me open up to the council for additional questions at this point. Um, Vice Mayor Overton.
Yes, okay. So I do have a couple of questions on how this comes about. Um, because this is, you know, like a hundred percent more than, you know, what people are used to paying uh or more on some of it. Um, if we do a nexus every eight years, I guess my question is, is how come this has never been brought forward and rates raised on a consistent basis?
I can believe this stuff.
Yes.
So we we didn't realize that this nexus study really had to be brought to fruition. And you know, it is, I take ownership when I took over from the last administration um that had been there for a long time. None of this stuff was ever passed on. And when we look at how we paralleled and stuff with the county, really nobody discussed it and it wasn't until recently. And like I said before, when we we look at doing rate increases, we do it on a series of trends that were in trouble. So and I just want to real quick hit on measure D. We identified in trending, if we kept going the way we were going, we're laying people off. So we came up with a measure D that was going to sustain what we have and do a little bit extra for the community. And that was staffing lower lake and getting that I S O writing down. So as we looked at that, what we haven't done and that our mitigation fees have an increase is we turned it back and looked and it's like, oh, it hasn't been done in thirty years. So that I own that as a fire chief, but I also wasn't aware of that from the previous administration. You know, so um, yeah.
Hasn't been a nexus study since ninety three?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is that.
But didn't you just say that there's, it's a lot to have on every eight years?
Right, but the none of us have, none of the fire districts have done them in in thirty years. And and we all own that. Mike owns it, Pat owns it, Joe.
There's no penalty for not doing it. I'm just kind of surprised that if it's something that's required.
When was the law enacted?
Yeah.
Yeah. To do the nexus study. How long ago?
That was a lot.
I I started doing nexus studies in two thousand two. That was the the first time I did nexus study. I'm not sure. It might have been after the fee was put in place. Uh, so the original fee did not have a nexus study. Uh, so.
That was just, here it is. This is, you know, we're just.
There was a description of what's in the plan or, you know, what what type of facilities the district has. But there was really no methodology that like tied the facilities. You see, it was like sort of, this is. So and I I think at that time that was fine. But then uh the fee act evolved, uh, it it has, it has had so many iterations. So um, the nexus study requirement most likely has been added since then. Um, I can speak to that. That's.
Right. Yeah, just just when you're, you come through and and I'm sure other people are questioning this when we're going from a dollar and you're asking for, you know, almost double a plus, you know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty percent, ninety three percent on these here. It just kind of makes me look like, well, why is this like not have come forward? And I'm sure other people will have that question too.
Um, yeah. None of our previous administrations, you know, throwback to bless the soul, Chief Don Parker, to Chief Ford Denman, to Chief McMurray, and then pass on to me. So it's something that's never got passed on and it's my stupid not going, hey, you know, because we are responsible for knowing. But what we did when we found out it was needed, we did and we're very transparent. And and it's not like we're really trying to catch up thirty years because we're not going a hundred and forty three percent. We're going about ninety nine point three percent, you know, um. And 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 those numbers, I I get it. They sound staggering and there could be an impact on on, you know, what that growth is going to be. But um, for for us to succeed and to grow with the city, that's what we project, just to help us get um, and and maintain a continuity of service.
So and then my, I have one more question. So my second question is, you said most of your stuff is medical, not fire. Is there a reason why you can't put, uh, uh, instead of putting a whole fire department somewhere? Is there a reason why we can't build a smaller thing and put just a medical uh where you have your ambulances and stuff there instead of everything there?
The the critical time is is, you know, it depends upon the dispatch, my personnel or staff. So that ambulance is running a medic leave one minute and then those folks are jumping on the engine to get to that full involved structure with entrapment.
Okay, so they're doing both.
Yeah, we we cross staff everything. So um, when you see us go on a fire with two medic units and an engine, then all of a sudden we break a medical two engine or two medicine sleeve. It leaves one or two people on the fire ground other than volunteers and our mutually partners from the other chiefs. So you have to have those pieces of equipment because, and then if you look at our lower lake station, we have a type one, a type two water tender and a type six engine. Our goal was to put a medic unit down there eventually. But those stations have to have the equipment for the cross staffing.
Well, I appreciate the lower lake one because I think that needed to happen and I and I'm glad that was is staffed. But um, but yeah, I was just curious about like, because we all see where there's a fireman and ambulances and everything all going to the same spot. And 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 we always, I think everybody wonders, why is it so many people in it? When if it's a fire, it's a fire, if it's an ambulance, then I would expect an ambulance and not a fire department to go.
Because our staffing is we have six people on twenty four hours a day, you know. So and you know, one, I have one person on my engine here. I have one person on my engine in lower lake. And then we have four people on the medic units, advanced life support. And then for our lower lake community, that's a firefighter two or a fire apparatus engineer slash paramedic. So they can do everything a paramedic can do. And that that type six engines is put with everything but the ability to to transport. They have a monitor, they have a drug box, they have a mechanical CPR device, and they can run a code for ten or fifteen minutes waiting for a transport either to get there.
Okay, good. Thank you for that information.
Any other questions from council?
I just have a quick. I I quickly quickly looked up, but if you had a dollar and ninety five, that's worth today a dollar ninety two. So you you're pretty right on. You're just catching up on inflation.
But but we also had to look at what is.
They're more. No, no, I have no problem in in in, you know, a a rate increase. That's that's not.
Yeah.
What we're concerned about as a council, maybe, maybe it's just my opinion, but we we just want to see how it how how it can be, you know, uh justified, can't then, so. That's all.
Councilmember Perdak.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for this. Thank you for your presentation. Um, it's very insightful, took in a lot of information. Um, we own some of that too, and the reason why this mitigation fee hasn't been moved forward, uh, maybe as promptly as it was since it does sit with us. Um, I want to thank you again for that. And also I see us working hand in hand and um, as our city grows. And I definitely want to see our public to be safe, any of our visitors to the city be safe and have your uh station staffed with the equipment and personnel that they need. Chief, thank you for coming up and sharing uh that information with us. I think uh your city should be proud of you and your station for looking at what you could do to be a a good partner in their, in the community and in the community's growth. Um, these days it doesn't seem like many take the opportunity to reduce fees when um, when they are looking at what it might do to stifle that growth. Um, and I think we have the same uh position here. I appreciate council member Sluton's um comments with in regard to that. Um, we're growing. We've been wanting to grow for a while. It's finally happening. We're getting some good press on the good things that are happening here in Clear Lake. And um, we need to be prepared for that and we need to be ready for that growth. So again, thank you for your presentation.
That's member Kramer.
Uh, yes, uh, council member Perdak uh pretty much agree with all he said. I also want to thank you, Dimitri, for your presentation and your ability to stand up there to talk as long as you did. He 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 talks, he talks much slower and he doesn't use acronyms. Boom. That's a dig. Chief, you.
But you have to use acronyms. You need to give us a sheet.
Uh, and Chief, appreciate your comments. I think you actually lent some clarity to me and understanding uh what's happening up there and and really um, I I uh, I do believe it's a lot of art involved. But um, I I do feel a lot better about with the information we now have from all of you. I, of course, was involved in that measure D uh from the other side, helping out uh with this passing. And I know uh, I know I asked you about uh that our workshop about, you know, what about the money for for measure D? I do feel I have a lot better understanding of that now as well. And and I really appreciate it that that it opened lower lake. Uh, going forward, um, I think, I think your study had had a million and a half in for that ladder truck, by the way, in uh, in your, in your numbers crunching. So that would not be a, would not be a new one. Hey, I I again, I I do thank you all for your uh, your presentations, chief. I I love kidding you about you're talking fast, but um, you're walking encyclopedia when it comes to fire science. Now, appreciate what you do.
Councilmember Perdak.
Got one last comment and uh, Chief, you are very politically correct. Um, I say, I am sometimes not. What this did is it opened my eyes to some of the other mitigation fees that other entities are charging. And quite frankly, I'm appalled um, because that is going to stifle growth. So I will be looking into some of those and at least talking with um, board members in other um districts. Um, because I I just, I think it's woefully expensive and um, not in the best interest of our community as we try to grow and build out good, positive things in our community. Um, so that's one of the things I took away from this.
One of the things that um, you know, supervisor Sabachi kind of brought to my attention, you know, is to get all this that have fee schedules. And set this all down in a room and and look at the validation of what we're charging. And is there room for, I know the county reduces from three to a two point six. Um, but but you're correct, there are some agencies that um were able to get those fees and now it impacts those of us that are trailing behind just to catch up. You know, so they're a little bit more on on the curve, but I I do think it'd be a good opportunity for all of the fee schedules to be brought to in a meeting and discuss and invalidate and reorganize them. I think it'd be great. I'd love to be part of it.
Absolutely support that. I'll do what I can to to uh bring that for to fruition. Thank you.
Councilmember Overton.
So and I feel like this is a lot our fault too, because we should be responsible, we're responsible for these fees. So one of the things I'd like to see is, is that it is run, that these fees are run through the city and the city is a pass through, you know, goes to you, you still get it. But that also keeps us aware of what's going on and that, and we can stay on top of maybe every year checking in and seeing and and having this approved on a yearly basis through uh our normal fee process that we do every year with our budget. So that this is never missed again, because I think that's where, I think everybody failed on this of of fees. And now now we're doing this, you know, seems like we need to do, you know, a big raise here, which, you know, when you start looking at this and it's, you know, when you're, when you're doing this, I mean, a dollar ninety three doesn't sound like a lot, but when you add it all up, it's a lot, you know. So so, yeah, yeah. So I mean, and it's, it's like, we're already having a hard time getting, you know, just getting people. I mean, we even put in a a process where we're trying to help people pay for these fees through through a grant program. Um, so I have a hard time. I personally have a hard time. And not that I say you don't need to have a raise. But yeah, I mean, I think we might want to look at this and say, is there a way we could stagger this a little bit? And maybe this year be a little lower, next year raise it, you know, and raise it on a more steady basis with our budget as it, you know, and do it with our budget uh and our fee uh updates. That's my suggestion.
Okay, well, uh, any other questions of these two? And then I'm going to give them a bit of a break and we'll do public comment. No, gentlemen, you you have a moment of uh a rest here, but more questions coming. All right. At this point, we'll open up public comment. If you have a comment, please come forward to the mic here in the chamber, uh, state your name and your city of residence.
Again, my name's Ralph Volpe and uh we live here in Clear Lake. Uh, it was a wonderful presentation. Lot of information provided in some terms that were a little confusing. Um, development, I wasn't, we weren't quite sure whether we're talking about what is developed already or whether we're only talking about new development within the city as the city grows. The mitigation fees, would they be applied strictly to um, new buildings? Um, would they and or would it also impact um, existing uh families, let's say, that are, that require um building permits for changes or improvements on their properties? And if so, would it only be for the square footage of the improvement or could it? And if so, would it only be for the square footage of the improvement, or could it also trigger a reevaluation of the entire property?
Think you're asking two or three different.
You're asking a bunch of questions. So the study did take in both existing and potential development. So
Say that again, please.
It takes into account both existing development, and it it gathered a series of projections on future development based on research by Mr. Semenov's firm. The impact fee, the mitigation fee, right now, as I understand it, is only for new builds, so new construction that is either residential or non-residential. It covers everything and it's broken up by square foot. Building permits, there's no.
Well, yeah, it it depends. So if you do, if you add a bedroom onto your house, you would have to pay for the additional square footage that's covered. If you add a garage to your property, you'd have to pay the additional square footage. You wouldn't pay for the existing existing. It's basically covered.
If you were replacing a garage.
Well, if you're adding new, you would have to pay for that.
If you're taking one down and putting a new one up.
Yeah, you, I believe now you get credit for the covered space.
Okay, oh, thank you for clarifying that.
The revaluation you're talking about would be the county assessor.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with us.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments here in the chamber? Yes.
My name is Mary Benson, and I am, although I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Fire the Lake County Fire Protection District, I'm speaking strictly as an individual today. And I I was struck by the use of the term art in the discussion tonight, and it reminds me of how every time someone gets a bank loan, they have to get an appraisal, and the appraiser comes up with an exact value of that house. And yet appraisers tell me that they can swing the value on any house fifteen percent in either direction on any day, depending on their mood or how they want it to come out, or depending on what the contract says. And you have to rely on their deep expertise and their their experience, their being in the trenches every day, looking at properties every day. And I think that's analogous to what we have here with Dimitri, who does this all the time for his job. And the fire chief, he's in there in the trenches. And as in my day job, we get encouraged to stay in our lane and to, even though I attend several home inspections a month, I'm not qualified to say whether a roof needs replacing. I can't do that. And so I would encourage you to trust in the expertise of the people who developed this report today. And when you call nine one one, you expect somebody to arrive and you expect them to have the right equipment. And I just want you to not be a victim of your own success because Mr. Flora and his team have done a commendable job on bringing new development in. But we do need the infrastructure to support that. And we want when when you call nine one one, somebody responds and they've got the right equipment, because without that, people will die and properties will be lost to fire unnecessarily. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the chamber? Hearing none or seeing none, Madam Clerk, any messages or comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on Zoom.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council, and I believe I have to close the public hearing. Okay, so I'm now officially closing the public hearing. And I'll bring it back to council for deliberation. And Mr. Semenov, that was your break. Come on back up. So.
At your service.
So one of the things I wanted to talk about, and I wanted you here because this is your lane, is to talk about the methodology. You outlined three different methodologies in the report, one being the capacity based, one also being the standard base. And I looked at some other communities, Sonoma County, Sacramento. A lot of communities use this, this approach to it. I also looked at a community around our size, Chocilla. And to to give everyone a bit of a background, the standard base looks at existing development and then is it's my understanding allocates a a certain cost based on that alone, not it doesn't factor in the projected development piece of it. So I took the equations from Chocilla. And if you'll give me a moment here, but coupled it with the great data that you've provided. So, you know, looking at the total cost of existing stations, vehicles, apparatus, you outline seventeen point six million. That would break down to about four thousand two hundred and fifty six dollars per cost per service call. And then using the data you provided on the 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 allocation of residential to non-residential. I came up with numbers that are eighty eight cents for residential and two oh six for non-residential. And I I did this as an exercise to to try to estimate what the current capacity is, since there's a lot of, as we talked about, art in the the current capacity numbers. This here to to me suggests that there is a lot of a lot of ground trying to be covered with this proposed impact fee in the assessment of new planned facilities and equipment that could potentially be brought online. Do I at least have a a general understanding of this this methodology?
Right. So if I understand correctly, you took the existing system.
So I copied the the Chocilla model, which your firm didn't do, but I would imagine a reputable firm did as well. That took the existing audit of the district's equipment, apparatus and vehicles. It broke it down by cost per call.
Okay.
So in in DC too, I named the tables after myself because I was having fun in Excel. And then once we had that cost per service, we used the calls by each land use. The existing square footage for that land use created a cost per square foot and then applied that to the fee here. And I'm happy to talk through the math.
No, I it makes sense.
Okay. So looking at these numbers, is it is it fair to say that that is the current investment that the district has in equipment, facilities and apparatus? And that if there was no forward looking, if someone were to build a house yesterday, the appropriate fee would be eighty eight cents and two oh six?
Yes and no. One thing that's missing from the from the top line, the 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 cost basis is we've made some assumptions about what it costs to finance. The engines and ambulances have gotten really, really expensive. A an ambulance is running three hundred fifty thousand dollars. The engine, we we heard the numbers. It's very rare that an agency now is able to afford to just pay cash for an engine or or an ambulance. More and more agencies are now having to finance at least a portion of the acquisition. So if you look at the in our calculation, if you look at the planned facility costs, there is a financing section. So the district is projecting that going forward, they will have to fund approximately half of their apparatus with with financing. So there is some additional costs that will have to be added to incorporate the interest and so financing fees.
That's fair.
So in general, this methodology is okay. What it doesn't take into consideration is the 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 planned facilities. The current system is, bless you. The current system does not seem to be adequate to serve future growth.
Adequate to serve existing development?
I would let the chief speak to that, but some of the additional facilities would definitely improve the service to the existing development.
But improve the service is not, we all want that, of course. And I think the 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 projected build out that has been included in this is a great vision for the district. I just want to get back to, is it the appropriate amount to cover expansion? And I haven't gotten those those figures yet. And even if we go fifteen percent in one direction, as as one resident suggested, I still don't even have that central amount. This is not a fifteen percent increase. This is this is saying for eight percent growth in the community, the fire district has to double it in size and value.
So a big chunk, if you if you look at the the additional projections, right, what are some of the things that are needed? A large percentage of that is firehouse, a large percentage of that is the the aerial ladder truck. So if no additional need for expansion of facilities was there, then this calculation takes the current current facility costs and allocates across his existing development. Yes, this is a, this was a good approach.
Okay, thank you. We're in the deliberative phase, so Vice Mayor.
So let's take our facility and our growth. And this is why I say I think this needs to be done in stages. Because we all know that, you know, this next year is not going to all of a sudden be a, you know, huge building that we need a ladder for. You know, and this is the reason why I think that the stage, you know, every year come back and look and 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 re and allocate so much instead of just bam, this whole amount is because right now we have existing things. It's all been allocated for that. They've already paid their fees. And and so I say, you know, give them a raise, but not to the point that we're we're going full blown on something that we don't even know what the future is going to bring. Every year, if we reevaluate it and with our fee structures, then we will know. We have an idea what's going to be built that year and whether it's going to impact the station or not. You know, because people put in for permits and we have an idea of how many projects are going to be and development is going to happen. So to me, it's this needs to be done on a a stage basis.
Councilmember Perdak, I'm sorry. Councilmember, do you have a comment?
Yeah, my only comment is we're thirty years behind and but we need to start looking at what we need to provide for our current community needs, and we have several three story and and large buildings, including a Walmart and other things. That do we have, and this is a anyway, hypothetical question, do we have the the infrastructure, the apparatus to deal with those? And I think we're behind.
Microphone, please.
So okay, but that it's not a matter of whether you are going to use it. It's a matter of if you need it, it's available.
So would the, so there's a proposed surcharge to to layer that on top of this for high impact projects? Would that you you talked about the ladder, would that be something you'd consider?
Yes. We're also looking at at the development that we've made public not that long ago with a very large medical facility at the airport property. Do we have the the equipment and apparatus once that opens? Should there be a a structure fire in that in that location? I I think it's our responsibility to work hand in glove with the fire department to see that they do.
Yeah, but that's, this is why I'm saying the stage, because that particular project's ten years down the line before it's completed.
Five, maybe.
Yeah. We'll see. Might be five years in the plan, but it'll be ten years before they're going to need a fire truck for it.
Well, and you may be, you may be right, but if it's five years, we're behind.
Though, but but we can't look at what because they didn't have the fees before, because that's not really fair. It's it's that we have to look at what the what the development is, and we have to look at that we are no fans. We're a low income area here, and I'm like Lakeport. I don't want to deter building here. And if we do it year by year, we kind of know how things are flowing. And if we see at some point, okay, we do need to jump it up more, we can always do that. That's why the fee structure and having it come back to the council is to me and do it with our fees is better.
Councilmember Perdak.
I don't necessarily disagree, Councilmember, but I think what they're asking for is reasonable. As I mentioned in my remarks previously, I think we've got some districts and I'm looking at over four dollars a square foot they're currently charging. They didn't come to us. They didn't make us aware. I believe it was something that was allocated by the state, and we just have to accept. I don't I don't agree with that. Thank you, Chief, for maybe putting us all around the table so we can talk about those. But again, I I feel that we're in a catch up mode to get our our stations and our equipment and our personnel to where I think they're going to need to be in five years.
Thank you. Councilmember Kramer?
Yeah, while you were talking about the methodology of the city, I looked at the city of Chocilla. They had two prisons come in between nineteen ninety and like two thousand and ten. They had tremendous growth. They went from fifty nine hundred to eighteen thousand. Since two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, they've added about three hundred people, one point seven percent growth. So I'm not, I'm wondering whether methodology aside, whether the city of Chocilla, although it's a similar size to the city of Clear Lake, I don't think it's the growth rate that they're projecting is nowhere near what I think we're projecting, and I agree with Member Perdak on that.
The equation and the data supplied were was all provided by the study. So it's just a similar equation, not necessarily.
But the equation, but still, it's it's based on a lot less growth. Anyway. May I add something? So as as you were deliberating, I looked up the study. And there's one piece of information that is missing in the formulas is a station, the current station seventy three is slated for rebuild. And we have, we zeroed out the value for that as a structure in our existing calculations. So in in the next study in table eight for station seventy three, there is a zero in terms of the building value.
Is seven three Pine Dell? Thank you.
And what would be the estimated value of that?
So the the construction cost to rebuild the station is two point seven.
What what's the existing value?
You know, I'm not sure about that information. I don't have.
Twenty five thousand?
It might, and we're talking, but probably in the fifties or sixties, there's no, there's some shady wire, not shady.
But the building's not falling down, is that correct?
No, it's not.
Yes, as I say, those buildings will last, you know, two hundred years, so it needs updated.
The foundation or the structure would never pass any
Okay, all right.
Well, I guess I don't understand what we're missing here. If it's a slab essentially, how would you factor that in?
If in 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 looking at existing inventory of facilities, right, you have to understand that if something needs to be brought up to code and or needs to be rebuilt, that needs to be added to the to the calculation.
How long has it been in this condition?
The fire department acquired it back somewhere in the early to mid seventies. They acquired that one as well as our seventy or a hundred year lease at the airport that was turned over to the to the city. So those buildings were disacquired, probably, well, I probably for them, but probably, you know, what what value cost? What value does that thing that the structure has to? Well, right now, it has a lot of ideas and houses and women. It's not going to be sitting out any weather invasion. So it does store fire apparatus. Then we can put a reserve, you know, sometimes there's a reserve engine that might be out there during summertime during peak seasons. Yeah, all our stations are usable facilities. But it really spent upon the personnel that we have living around there or accessibility to it. And that's why I'm talking fifteen, twenty years on that area that's been slow growth. Yeah, we may have a need for, and that's going to be at the very far edges because guaranteed rolling code three, as it's your structure fire, Chris conceived several years ago. Maybe a while ago, they had to roll for the main station, you know, picture a wood add station out of Pine Dell. It would have got that probably in quarter. You know, so we don't have quick response times. We have a very fragmented district we have to cover. And so as the chief looking at what is going to be the best bid is where is that growth going to be and what's going to reduce that time for medical and infrastructure. Growth is probably not going to happen. Hey, never know.
What is the boundary for SRA?
The boundary for SRA is everything on the east side of probably fifty three. And a dog lives over around the Burns Valley and comes out down their country club. And then everything on the lakeside is ours and part of it goes up across where they call. And then everything on the lakeside is ours and part of it goes up across what they call the tri-levels off of country club. And then most of that is SRA back there. But you gotta remember that, yeah.
State responsibility.
I was gonna hit that. So you have LRA, local. A state responsibility and then FRA is federal responsibility areas. The only thing is that even though it's SRA, your local fire department has responsibility of the structure and lab property. So we don't have any responsibility for the wildland other than if we don't stop the wildland, we're going to lose homes. And it's vice versa for the state agencies. If they don't help us put the house out, they're going to lose all the wildland. So even though you do have SRA, you have these boundaries, these boundaries that come close together, we call those mutual threat zones, MTZs. You know, so even though that is all wildland, if you look at Kelsey, the entire Riviera is SRA. But Joe has responsibility for every single structure and every single, every single life there. But, but I wanted to answer real quick if I could on the ladder truck. So there again, I, um, you know, I inherited that ladder truck. It was purchased not to fit our community. It was a good deal. Um, maintenance was impossible. It was a two thousand and one American of France that isn't manufactured anymore. Um, it was continuous problems. It was four thousand dollars to get a ready to put in it. After every ten hours, you had to retorque about three hundred bolts on the turntable, a lot of work, a lot of effort. And we did use it on the YZ as both fires. So it was deployed several times, but the maneuverability of that in the city was not conducive. And so when we look at a new one, it's similar to the cab chassis frame that Lakeport runs. Smaller frame, more maneuverable to what we need. So we did sell it because it was going to be, it was costing us more. Because you say we don't use it very often, but to your point, that one time you need it and it's your family member, that's, that's pretty critical. And the ladder is not just for the fighting fires, but we use it for aerial rescue as far as getting somebody outside of the canyon over the side of the embankment. A lot of those things, you know, it's, it's pretty much unstoppable what you can, can deal with in one of those. But more to the point, we talk about, um, the growth impact. So if you read our report. My department alone runs fifty-seven hundred and seventy-three calls. We are a call away from not. If I didn't have my brothers helping me in the other departments, we would fail a lot of calls. We're at a breaking point right now. Sixteen calls every twenty-four hours my crew run. In twenty twenty-three, we ran a cardiac arrest call every five days. Today, we had two cardiac arrest calls and three, uh, two, a total of three eleven forty fours. And that's not uncommon to have twenty calls in by eight o'clock at night. So we are surviving, but we're behind the times. I do need another ambulance. I do need another heart monitor. I just ordered a heart monitor. Me should can attest fifty-nine thousand dollars for a heart monitor. That I have to replace in seven years.
Okay.
So we are at a breaking point.
Thank you both. Um, I think.
Eighteen calls today, by the way, so far.
Thank you both. Um, appreciate, uh, you fielding our questions and, and, um, giving your perspective. Uh, let's. Focus in as a council, um. What do we, uh, what are we looking to do here? Is that a?
Do we have to first reading?
Right, right. So, and this, this ordinance is for the fees schedule or?
Well, it, it just moves the fees from being set by ordinance to set by resolution. So you can still deliberate on what kind of fees you want for next meeting. You just be giving staff direction on what that is.
I, I think it should be on our fee schedule so that, you know, every year, well, let's say, let's just say. We all of a sudden get in a boom and we need to raise it. It gives them the opportunity to raise it also. You know, it's not like we're just going to say, here it is. But if everything's going good and the fees schedule is good, then we can just, we can just approve the fee schedule. But if we see that this fee schedule is no longer working because we had a big growth and we felt like this needs to be raised. It gives us the opportunity to raise it without having to go through this whole thing all over again. It just gives the council an opportunity where they can come and say, this is what's happening. We need twenty cents more, uh, a square foot. And we can just do it, you know, without having to go through this whole ordeal of, of raising the, you know, public hearing and all that stuff. I think it's just a smarter way to, a faster process to get things, you know, done and raised and, and, and keeping an eye on it. And we won't lose track of, of what needs to happen for our community. So I think we do need to go to just having it onto the fees, you know, on our schedule and just approving it every year, uh, as it goes. So.
That's what is saying is if you get done by resolution, that resolution takes the form of a fee schedule or a separate, it's really up to the council.
That gets decided next meeting.
Well, it would be nice if we had some direction to generate a resolution.
We wanted on the fee schedule, basically, wouldn't that be in the resolution?
Well, using what we provided, the rate provided.
So, well, the resolution is going to be to put it on the fee schedule, correct? I mean, if that's what we've got, and then we would decide what the fee is at that time.
Well.
They've, they've put up a recommended fee schedule. Why don't we just go with that for now?
Well, I'll chime in there. I'm, I'm very sensitive to the, the single family home, uh, impact fee. And I think leaving out multifamily, um. Uh, including multifamily would, uh, certainly drop that rate. Um, it's projected within their studying. I think, um, Mr. Semenov suggested that, uh, it's about twenty-five percent higher. So if we have a, an allocate, allocation factor of, of one point two five there.
Starting from one point, a dollar ninety-three and then allocating between multifamily and single family.
Well, so what, the, what they've lumped residential, uh, multifamily into residential. So if we have a, a one point two five allocation fee, that would bring down the burden on residential. It would bring down the cost of residential.
So instead of one ninety-three across the board, it would be something less for single family and something more for medical or. Multi.
Have a hard time with the single family thing too, because I want to see single family homes. I mean, I don't want to see more apartments really built. I want to see people owning homes here. That's what we, we, I think that's what our goal is, you know? And if we make it to where they can't afford to, to purchase, then it's, it's, it's already high. So.
Um, a- and the benefit of doing this as well is that it doesn't take away from the overall revenue, the way the, the calculation is based. Um, it just diverts, uh, some of the revenue from single family to multifamily. Did you have a?
We seem to have more being built of multifamilies. Multifamilies seem to be being built more than single families right now.
Thank you. Our, our multi, multifamily structure is only four percent. So that is, would end up hitting, hitting us really harder than. And where we're going with this, but in the, in the ordinance, we had some, some questions because it. We, we didn't have and weren't notified that the draft was done. And so we didn't have a chance to, to review it. And then there's the talk about, um, a resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen that we have no idea that. The current ordinance is, provides a lot of leniency, but it doesn't give the fire district, um, any authority. So i- if I can pass out some of the stuff that we've done, just to. Little bit of food for that.
Yes, please, please do.
It kind of discusses some of this stuff in staff report, some concerns we have in the ordinance and those supporting, um, documents. So we had hoped to, um, before the ordinance came out, we would have the opportunity to sit and discuss it. And then, um, definitely in regards to the resolution. Twenty-four, twenty-four dash fourteen, we have no idea what that looks like and we, we need to make sure that.
And my board who speaks for the community as a, a, their own governing body, agreed to the content of that. And, you know, I was hoping we would have had a discussion on the ordinance and the resolution before we came to the, the first hearing. And I, I did make some requests to see where that draft was. And then I did find it online yesterday. And, um, I attempted to call you and now I had a discussion because it, uh, you know. It would have been nice to have the opportunity to discuss the components of that draft ordinance. And then as it talks about a resolution, I have no idea what that resolution says.
Thank you. Thank you. Everyone's reading, so come on up, Chief.
So, you know, so i- in, in here, we, we do talk about, you know, the district sets the fees and, and, and. You know, it's, it's our fees and then we're asking you to, you know, take and accept our resolution based upon the fire district. And, and our needs and, and our nexus study that has been approved by our board. And it not be, um, a city of resolution is being, it'd be a city of resolution, but with, with our input. And it be pretty much our document identifying and validating, um, those fees and, and the structures that have been established. Instead of an overall just fee schedule.
Okay, thank you. All right, i- is there any other deliberation on this Vice Mayor?
So they can talk more about this at the next meeting, correct?
You can talk about it the next six meetings if you like.
No, no.
But it's, to me, it looks like that, that we have a conflict here. Existing law is not.
Yeah, I do. I continue to think there's still a general misunderstanding about our process and.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I want to make it very clear, we're the responsible people. Is that not correct? We're the responsible people for these, for mitigation fees. So, uh, so, a- a- and that's why I said it's, it's our fault that. This didn't get caught because we should have been aware of it too. Um, so I'm not agreeing that, you know, I do think it needs to be just on our fee schedule. And that's the reason why I say it should be on a fee schedule. That gives you the opportunity to submit if you think it needs to be raised and us to, to talk about it. And, um, and, and make those decisions, but it is our fees, it's our responsibility. I think it should be gone through the city. And, 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 uh, as it is, and, uh, stay that way and just be put on our fee schedule. So that we can do this every year and just make sure that it stays on track.
I agree.
And I would concur with that as well.
Get your money. Get this thought that you're not going to get your money.
So in terms of action at this point, uh, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, what's before the, the only thing before the council is to have a first reading of. Adopt a resolution. There is no resolution on the table yet. It can't become really, you can't even adopt a resolution yet. Because you need an ordinance to, for, to first be switched to allow that to, to be the case. So it would definitely be anything about fee setting would have to occur at a future meeting.
Understood. All right, then. I, I think we're at the point now where let's, uh, let's move forward here. Uh, do we have, uh, any action on this then? Or any more additional comment?
Yeah, but I so moved for the resolution. Number two zero two five dash fifteen, supporting the applicant, oh, whoops, wrong one. Sorry.
You need to turn your.
Turn your mic on.
It's on.
Speak into us.
It's getting kind of sore, that's all. So let me find the resolution now. Do we have a resolution? I mean, yeah, we're in this.
There you go. Nope, that's not it.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Perdak.
I'd like to make a motion that we hold the first reading of the ordinance, number two six nine dash two zero two four. Read it by title only and waive a further reading and set the second reading and adoption for the April fourth meeting.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Perdak and a second from Councilmember Sluton. Uh, please vote in your.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, thank you for everyone in attendance. Um, I know this was, uh, a long meeting for just the first step in this process. But I think a lot of, uh, great information was shared and it will help us set the path moving forward. So I appreciate all your time and, and the information.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I, um, so it sounds like we have a majority of the council that wants to include this in our. Fee resolution. So we can, I mean, Chiefs of Pay keeps talking about, you know, we aren't sharing the resolution. Well, that's because we haven't drafted one yet because we don't know what we're supposed to put in it. So, um, it sounds like that will be part of it. Um, we haven't gotten clear direction on what the fee amount will be. I've, um. So I'm, I'm just making that clear. We can bring something back, but there's going to have to be additional discussion. I mean, I heard some comments about lower. I heard some comments about, um, include. You know, what the fire district has approved. Um, but there doesn't seem to be clear direction there. So, y- you know. We don't have to discuss it now. I just want, so everyone in the room is clear that, um. You know, that's still going to have to be flushed out a little bit, it appears.
Understood.
I, I think the general consensus is, is that we do want a multifamily component to this schedule. Is that, am I reading that right? I would like to go, I, I, after looking at all the evidence, I think that the fees, the one ninety-three and the two, whatever it was. And then split that, that one ninety-three allocated between single family and multifamily. That would, I, I would be okay with that.
So I think, let me clarify what I would, I, I think we're on the same page, but it would be using, uh, Mr. Sevenob's, uh, equation. Giving an allocation factor of one to residential, one point two five to multifamily, one point two five to non-residential. Um, and not touching any other part of the equation, which, which would then lower the fee for single. There, there's a downfall effect.
Discount the number. Now, the, the two, two forty-one for non-residential. Plus the fifty cent for the large footprint.
So that, that would be an additional question. So I'm, I was just talking about the fee itself. There's still the surcharge. Yeah, so that, that, what I just said doesn't involve the surcharge.
There's.
Well, well, it's, yeah, it's pretty muddy, but we can certainly, um, come up with a.
Zipped it out.
And we can argue about it again next time.
And give it some figures and see what it comes out to be. So.
It's twenty-five less and twenty-five more. You're talking a dollar seventy-five for residential, maybe two twenty-five. For multiple and two forty-five for.
He's already figured it out for you.
For, um, commercial or non-resident.
And that's.
Approximately.
You know, I, I think it makes a little bit of sense, although if you look at the, it, the last couple of projects in, in town. Uh, there've been all.
And we have more coming.
So we have more coming in, yeah, on eighteenth. Yeah, yeah.
And I'm sure we'll have more down that road. So. Yeah.
All right, uh, if there's no additional comment, uh, we're going to move on to item K.
Too late, Willie. We're going to discuss it next time, too.
The only reason I brought the resolution is it's written in part of the ordinance. And I'm confused on the ordinance. Is it going to have anywhere of the fire district's resolution opposed to the city's resolution? That was my only question I'm confused on.
Uh, Mr. Flor, if you could clarify, but I believe it's, or Mr. or Mr. Jones?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, it's, it's, would be based on our resolution. I mean, if, um. If the council wanted to reference the fire district's resolution there, you could.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure the, um, nexus study would be referenced because there has to be, you know, some nexus. For the establishment of the higher fees, so.
So at this point, Chief, it would be the city's resolution referencing the district's resolution. Thank you. All right, moving on to item K, City Manager and Councilmembers' report. Mr. Flor.
Okay, a few items. So, um. Talking about single family development, the, um, the Danco subdivision, twenty-nine acres. Um, I talked to the developer last week and, um. So you'll recall, we opened escrow on that. That's still city property and it was a stab, uh, the escrow period was based on. Completing the entitlements for that, which, um, are now done. All the appeal periods are passed. And so, um. Within the next thirty days, we'll be closing on that, um, receiving the rest of the payment from the developer. Within the next thirty days, we'll be closing on that, um, receiving the rest of the payment from the developer. And they plan on, uh, starting construction later this year. Um, we're in the very final stages of, um, our road projects for this year as far as the design. There's, we're trying to put all the projects out together in order to get more savings overall. And so one of the projects has been done for a few weeks, other two, um, I'm told should be done by the end of the month. And then we could put those out to bid. So, um. I guess the one caveat to those, so we have four projects that are, um, in design, Burns Valley and Arrowhead. Because of some federal funding, um, there could be some delays on that, um, because of, uh. Tribal consultation. So we'll see, we may not be able to get that project done this year, but.
Tribal anymore?
I, I wish we could just go to the same consortium that has the tribal health going here.
Um, while it's not our project, um, Conecta Water District is, um. We moving forward soon on the damn road, water line upgrade and the inner tie down that area said their pre-construction meeting last week. Um, and of course, you know, city's engaged on that and that'll be a good project to get going. We did submit our requests for earmarks last Friday based on the council's direction. So we'll wait and, um, see what type of response we get from Congressman Thompson and subcommittee on that. Um, one bit of unfortunate news, news related to a grant, we had applied for, um, reconnecting communities grant. To do, um, a number of intersection improvements along Highway fifty-three. Um, you know, we have continually almost, um. Just pedestrian and vehicle, um, issues there. And, um, you know, it's not our, it's not our road, it's Caltrans's road, but this is a way for us to try and make something happen there. So it wasn't real well-defined on how much we could ask for, but the projects we put in would have told about twenty-five million. It would have included pedestrian over crossing. Um, so we were not successful in, in getting that, those funds. They had, they only awarded three of those grants statewide, one in, uh, they had rural category. They had a, I think, commuter category and then urban category. So City of Arcata, uh, was the successful jurisdiction on that. Um, you know, they did have a compelling case because of the university and everything that's, um, separated there by one-on-one. So there is an additional round through that program that is due, I believe, in September. So, um, we're anticipating, um, trying that application again. The last thing I wanted to mention, um, is related to the Lake County Sanitation District. Um. So we found out last week that, um, Lake County Sanitation District is not going to allow the Conecta Gardens Affordable Housing Project connect. To connect to their sewer system, um, until sanitation district makes, um, a number of upgrades. Um, a report was done. This is something that should have been done a very long time ago. Um, sort of like our traffic upgrades and our water system upgrades that were done. Um, but it wasn't. And so they are actually. Prepared to provide occupancy to half of the units in the next thirty days.
Did, did they provide a will serve letter originally for the project?
They provided a conditional will serve letter that said you need to do a capacity analysis.
That wasn't done?
Which was just completed fairly recently. I just saw it last week.
And what, was, was that the, the district's responsibility to do that?
Well, they, they put it on the developer, but you know, as you know, it's sewer districts model and, um. Sewer district ended up contracting for the work. Um, what the, what the report says is there, um. The existing system is exceeding capacity. And, um, the, the new, this, this area needs to be upgraded with or without the new project. And, um, the section of pipe that they're looking to upgrade is impacted by four point four percent by the, by the new project. But it's already exceeding their level. So pretty frustrating. I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting. They had a report on it this week. Um. You know, tried to, to share the situation that we have, you know, a thousand families have applied for, for those hundred and two units. Um, that half of which should be open within thirty days and the rest of them probably early. That. Um, unless we can come up with some sort of solution, you know, won't be able to be occupied until October, November is the recommendation from special districts. Um, and it, it, it really is probably putting the entire project in jeopardy because of the, the. Fortunately, um, you know, I got a lot of blank looks from, um, staff and most.
I got, I, I got a comment that you did an awesome job over there. So public people just thought you did a great job. So.
Well, the response was underwhelming. So, uh, anyway, we do have a meeting tomorrow with the developer, special district supervisor Sabatier. So, you know, we'll, we'll see if we can make any progress, but, um, you know. Extraordinarily frustrating that, that we're at this, this point and there's very little, if any, planning, um, from special districts. In, in being able to, you know, and it makes me wonder what other, um, you know, we've had an extraordinary number of sewer spills all winter this year. Um, there's areas that have been a challenge for maybe at least a decade. And, um, no known plans, um, from special districts to improve any of those areas currently. So.
It sounds like an, a similar story.
Uh, anyway, that's my glowing report.
Thank you, Councilmember Perdak.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Sluton.
I, I have something to report. I had a LAFCO meeting yesterday and, uh, John Vinno, who has been. The LAFCO executive officer for the last, I think he said twenty-five years. Is, is retiring and, um, we interviewed one person that he knows. And, uh, the, the position was advertised on some LAFCO news, news and also at, at the county levels supposedly. And one person applied for it and, uh, um, we're going through the process of looking in to make sure that she can handle the workload and, uh. And the. The, you know, the process, processes that LAFCO has to go through. So. By the next meeting, which is in two months, we'll probably announce a new, uh, LAFCO executive officer. That's my report.
Councilmember Kramer.
Uh, yes, I attended clerk meeting last week, uh, to report, uh, there'll be starting, they're setting up a carbonizer. It's a biomass, uh, process to make basically char, charcoal, charcoal out of. Uh, wood mass and they're gonna set it up at the Middletown Sewer Facility. They've also already got, um. PG&E would like to bring down a thousand tons, I think initially, and perhaps more from their steam well facilities of trees that have gone down over the winter. Were, are dead standing. Um, it's gonna be a huge project, I think. The big thing is finding a, finding a, um. A buyer for the, for the biochar that's created. Then I went to an RRA meeting. Um, by the way, clerk is Fair Lake Environmental Research Center and RRA is, uh, Risk Reduction Authority. So I don't become Willie on that. Um. Or what I'm accusing of. Anyway, uh, RRA is looking at actually brokering biomass. And I tried to get both clerk and RRA to kind of come together and collaborate. And so far. Uh. It, I failed to do that, but I think if we, if they could collaborate on projects, we could get a lot done as far as, as biomass and tree, uh. You know, uh, dead tree removal, especially up in the, uh, south of Highway twenty-nine, all of those hills. Or dead ones standing and there are fire hazards. So it's something that we need, really need to work forward on. And I also, I listened in, I didn't, I zoomed the Board of Supervisors meeting on the Conecta Gardens project and Alan's. City manager Flora's, uh, comments, and he did do a fantastic job, by the way. Um, and as he said, quite frankly, there was a lot of blank stares from. You know, a couple of, of the supervisors, uh. Supervisor Sabat, Sabatier was, of course, spoke up not quite as much as we would have liked, but he's, he did speak up. And Supervisor Simon, I'm not sure, he, he asked some questions of, uh, Mr. Harder. Which I think basically softened the blow of what, uh, Mr. Flora had just said. Um. About the problem. Uh, Mr. Harder, I'm convinced. Is not gonna do anything about it unless he has really pushed hard. I think it's gonna be up to the Board of Supervisors. Also, uh, talking on it was the Conecta Gardens, the developer, I don't remember his name, and also their attorney. And I guarantee you that this Board of Supervisor is gonna hear more from them. Um. This, this is just a travesty, this Conecta Gardens thing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Overton.
I don't really have anything to report. I just want to report that I'm gonna be gone until, um, I'm leaving tomorrow morning. If I can get out of here and get my work done. I'll be working all night. So, um, and I won't be back until the third of April. So I will be out of town, but you can feel free to contact me on my cell phone if you need to.
Thank you.
I mean, I asked her for you to try.
Take a break, take a break. Um, nothing to report from me. Um. Future agenda item.
Can I, can I pull a quick Councilmember Kramer?
By all means.
I just, I forgot to mention, um, to the full council that, uh, Mayor Claffey, Councilmember Sluton and myself are gonna be traveling to. The I, um, ICSC conference in Monterey, um, for a couple of days next week to, um, meet with a number of retailers. So.
Thank you. Uh, City Manager Flora, I have nothing to report. Uh, future agenda items. Um, I do want to echo Councilmember Kramer's, uh, perspective on this Conecta Garden situation. And is there, um. Is it worth bringing this up and, and talking about more fully and figuring out where the, uh, the gaps were in, in this situation and why we're in this situation?
Sure.
Sure. Let's, uh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, um, yeah, we could definitely, uh, have an item to talk about some of this at the next meeting if the council would like.
Uh, yeah, and I mean, I, I'd be interested in hearing from special districts as well, if that's, that's possible. Um, I'd like to get their perspective.
Happy to invite them.
I think that's a good idea. If he shows up. Well. No, no, it's not showing up. Well, hell, just as big as.
Well, I mean, let's, let's, let's make the offer and, and, um, let's, uh, let's hear from the source. Uh, all right, moving on, announcement from, uh, announcement of action from closed session. Mr. Jones?
Actually, I did that at the beginning. There was no action.
Easy enough. I just want to double check, you know? Um, and then are we gonna go back into closed session? All right, no. Then at this point, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
A nail biter tonight, Kevin.